All right, good evening everybody. I'll call this meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Thursday, June 23rd, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the plate. Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us to achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. Mr. Tracy, would you like to call your board to order?
I will call the meeting of the North Carver Water District to order.
Thank you. Just a couple of things before we start. The purpose of this meeting, obviously, is to get to the bottom of some of the issues that have been happening with the North Carver Water District and try together to find some solutions. I think that's the reason we're all here, and that's our common goal. At the beginning of the meeting, you'll all have the chance, whoever wants to, to step up to the microphone and speak and give us your thoughts, and then we'll work together to try to find some solutions, some short-term solutions and some longer-term solutions. So with that being said, the first item on our agenda, and the only item on our agenda this evening, is a joint meeting with the North Carver Water District Commissioners to discuss recurring water issues and possible solutions. And just before we start, Mr. Tracy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, yes, I just want to kind of address everyone. The news was bad this morning, and then it got worse, and then it got worse, and then it got worse. The membranes, the filtration units at the treatment plant have exceeded their lifespan, and they're now allowing iron and manganese to get into the system in excess of DEP requirements. So the North Carver Water District is going to have to stop operations of water production for potability. In the short term, we're hoping, and I haven't heard back from the superintendent of Middleborough yet, we're going to be converting over to, and I'm hoping that this can happen, to Middleborough's water system. I can't say that DEP and Middleborough are going to play along with this plan just yet, but that, we're going to, North Carver Water District right now is just, it's going to have to become non-operational. So that being said, that's not the best news that I could have hoped to deliver to you tonight, but that is, that's where we're at right now.
Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, other than, we've all looked at sources of water and look at some options that the boards may have tonight, if it's in an emergency situation, both in funding and in taking care of some of these issues. I think we're all working towards the same goal here. It's something that happens, and it happened, so it's something that we have to rectify.
And just for the purposes of people at home, we have a few people up here at the desks that aren't members of board, so if you could just identify yourself for the people at home. Dave?
I am Dave Seentoff. I am the Director of Operations and Maintenance for the Town of Carver.
All right, and folks?
I'm Debbie Trumbull from Small Water System Services, and my associate here, Steve Bishan. We're from Small Water System Services, we're the contract drinking water operators for the Town of Carver. So we're here tonight with some information to share, and as we're, when it's our turn to speak, so.
Okay. And folks, if you could just make sure when you do speak, you speak into the microphone for the people at home, okay?
Yes.
All right. Folks, if you could just, when you come up to the microphone, just identify yourself, name and address for the folks at home and for the record, okay? Is there anyone that would like to address? Ma'am?
My name is Hannah McDonald. I'm 20 years old. I've lived in the town for my whole life.
What's your address, Ms. McDonald?
11 Lakenham Drive.
Thank you.
It's right off Green Street. I work at South Shore Emergency Room. It is a Level 2 trauma facility. I every night go to work and am covered in things that I should not be saying to you. Any bodily fluid that you can imagine has been on my skin, and I have to come home and shower in dirty water that is causing breakouts on my face. It's stinging and burning my eyes, and I am itchy all over my skin. I have to, I have to provide my great-grandmother, who lives on Green Street, with dirty water, or with clean water, because she is going blind and cannot see the water that she is drinking. She didn't know she was drinking brown water for three days. And I had to go with my brother, buy new cases of water, just like we did for our home, and provide it for her, because she can't see the water is dirty that she is drinking. It is unacceptable. This doesn't happen everywhere. I've gone to Weymouth for work for two years now. I've grew up in Plymouth with my friends, Middleborough. This doesn't happen. This isn't something that happens. Dirty water is unacceptable. This is not a Third World country. We live in Massachusetts, in a small town that we pay a substantial water bill for. And I still have to come home from work, from an eight-hour, a 12-hour, or 16-hour shift. I don't get to sit in an office and type on my computer. I have to come home, come home from work, covered in disgusting things, and shower in disgusting water. Never mind that I'm paying for that water, and now paying for replacement water. That is ridiculous and unacceptable. This isn't something that happens. This isn't something that should continue to happen, or that has happened before. Dirty water is not acceptable. That's the one word.
Thank you. Next, sir. And again, ma'am, just your name and address.
Hi, I'm Joe Beedling. I live at 277 Nino Street. For the past 10 years, there's a dig site that's been operating. All kinds of sand and dirt removal, 25 to 50 trucks a day. The most I counted was 53. We get vibrations in the house from these trucks going back and forth. My well is starting to become affected. I have yellow stains in my toilet. We have a whole-house water system. We have the filter changed once a year, and for the past couple of years, I've noticed about the yellow stain. And I asked the guy that comes and changes the filter if my well water could be affected by all these trucks going back and forth, and he said most definitely. It's got a high iron content from the water test I just had a couple weeks ago, and I might have to have a different filtration system put in due to all the digging, the vibration, the dust, you name it, coming from this dig site next door. I'm worried I'm going to have more problems like the rest of these people here, and it's just not right. And I begin to wonder, is all the digging, construction that's going on within the town having a town-wide effect on all of our water? Is it possible? What can be done about it? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, sir?
Hello. My name is Keith Bossing. I live at 27 Santana Way in North Carver, and I appreciate the Water District being intense tonight to address these issues that we've been all experiencing in North Carver with water system. I personally feel that we know what the problem is. Everybody in this room has had experience with the issue of discolored water. What I would like to know is two or three things. First off, is the water safe to consume in accordance with DEP and Safe Drinking Water Act guidelines and conditions? Number two, I'd like to know why the filters, membrane filters, I take it, why they failed, and is there a reason why that hadn't been addressed earlier to make sure that they don't fail? And number three, I'd like to know specifically what is going to be the plan in terms of addressing this issue rather quickly? And I understand from the comments that were made earlier that you're looking to Middleborough to see if we can get some relief there, but I'd like to know what the contingency plan is, should Middleborough not be willing to help us out during this period that you're going forward with addressing the issue? And finally, I notice, I got a notice in the mail about a coliform violation that occurred back in January, and I'd like to know more about that, because coliform is an indicator of potential contaminants in the water that could cause true health issues. Dirty water can probably be consumed, but water that has coliform in it is an indication that something more serious is going on. One could understand that maybe it's a sampling issue back in January, but I'd like to know whether that truly is the case, and what is being done to make sure that we don't have coliform in our water so that we can have safety for our families and ourselves. So that being said, is really what I'd like to see addressed this evening.
Making a list. Thank you.
I can speak to the reasons why the membranes aren't, haven't been ordered yet. We didn't receive, the North Carver Water District has the monies available to it to purchase the membranes, but we need town meeting approval in order to authorize the movement of the monies from our retained earnings to purchase the membranes. And the quote for the membranes just came through, just, it came through too late for us to get it onto this past spring's town meeting. Now, the town and the district are exploring other opportunities to kind of get that project moving along, but there's a certain amount of lead time for the replacement of the membranes, and we're just, we haven't quite put the numbers together yet.
And I really want to give everyone a chance to speak before we get into discussions, but I think there are a couple of points that maybe we should address now. So, Mr. Fantasy? That's fine. First of all, obviously, there's an issue right now, today, with the North Carver Water System. So what can we do immediately to get folks bottled water, so that we can, they could have drinkable water? What kind of a plan can we put in place now while we work on the Middleborough connection?
So we can have water delivery.
Okay.
If we get a delivery service that has that amount available.
And what do we need to do? Do we need, how do we need to get people to contact us, or do we need to, how do we put that together?
I think what we would do, and Dave, you can add to this, is to contact every user of the service and see what their needs are, how many people in the home, et cetera, and then put together a plan to get water to them.
Can you, working with folks in Town Hall, put that together as soon as possible so we can get that moving? And then just, I know Mr. Tracy mentioned that there's an issue with the membranes, and obviously, that's a long-term issue, but perhaps if you could look into, there may be something that the Select Board can do, maybe we can transfer some money so folks don't have to wait for the next town meeting to get this going. Maybe there's a way we can transfer some money and work out the details later.
Yes, and there's even funding through Hopper that may be useful.
The Select Board can authorize the use of some of that and do some type of transfer, get the whole process moving.
To get it going, yeah.
Okay, so perhaps we can look into that as well. All right. Sorry to interrupt, but ma'am, you're next.
Hi, my name is Tara Stone, and I live at 10 Lakenham Drive. I'm sure everyone here is aware that our street was one of the first in the town to get put on what was Middleborough Town Water many years ago, because the town failed the residents of this community and had contaminants from the landfill. The town had to pay off everyone who lived on that street back in late 80s, early 90s. The solution was to get Middleborough Town Water. Middleborough was working fine. North Carver decided they wanted to create their own water district. Ever since then, we've had nothing but issues, and now we're told that the water is now unusable? You're failing your residents in the community yet again, the same area that went through contaminants 20, 40 years ago, and this is happening all over again. And now you're telling us that the water is inconceivable? How long did we know that? How long have we been drinking this water, showering in this water, using this water to cook, and no one has informed us of this? For years, when we've had issues with our water, whether it's brown water, loss of water, the town has never been held accountable. And we call Town Hall, and they say, "We have nothing to do with the water here in this town. Don't contact us." And now you're saying that you need to wait for a meeting to get approval for funds? How long is this going to take? And how long are we going to be, like, are we without water? Can we use the water? I have the same questions that this gentleman over here. You know, safety. You poisoned our street years ago, and now you're poisoning us again.
Thank you.
Wes Swain, I'm on 6 Lakenham. To address the issues with the membranes, I work for a major paving company, and when we have stuff that's kind of shut down in production, we have it on supply, and we know the membranes only last about 10, 10 years or so, according to the DEP, and they're already past that life, so I'm wondering, since it affects people's health, their drinking water, why do they didn't have replacement membranes? So, okay, this is already, the membrane's ready to go, let's swap it out. And now you're saying we have to wait for a meeting to give people healthy living conditions and water that's not poisonous? So why don't they just convene a meeting, like, an emergency meeting? It's not that hard. You can say, "Sorry, people, you don't get water because you missed the meeting. Wait till next year." And also, on Lakenham, it's a dead-end street, so all the companies that need water, like when they're paving down on Montello, they go down to the end of our street with a hydrant ranch that they can get off of Amazon, and they open the hydrant. And I talked to someone at Town Hall, they said that the company down on Montello was allowed by someone in operation says, "Yeah, it's fine." And then I called the DEP, they said, "Absolutely not. They're not supposed to be selling water to the pool companies or anything like that," yet it's been happening. They don't even have enough water to give us adequate water pressure, let alone the streets, Plymouth Street and all the other streets, yet they're selling our water. And any time, I mean, it's just inexcusable. And seven days, nobody's said, "Hey, don't drink your water." Because when you take it out of the tap, first, it looks clear until you put it in a bottle, and then it settles, then you can see it's yellow. But what if you just have, like, I don't know, like a blue travel water, you just fill that up, you could be drinking that water, like, for five days and have no clue. I mean, the membrane should have been already here. It shouldn't be like, let's wait until they fail, order them, especially after COVID. Everything in the world's on back order. And we should have stuck with Middleborough Water. I lived near Weymouth for 20 years, never had an issue with that water. And when we did have an issue, it was, all right, on a Monday, they sent out notices, "We're going to be flushing your water in like a week or two." We get like a message like a day before, "Oh, we're flushing your water tomorrow, so I hope you don't have anything planned."
Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Bridgette McDonald, 11 Lakenham Drive, Carver. I wanted to put this on record in this meeting. I know I had emailed it out to a couple of you of the Select Board, but these are concerns. So we did, so I just found out tonight that it's not potable per DEP. That's unacceptable to me, that I'm in a meeting a week later finding out my water isn't potable per DEP standards. I feel like the situation is emergent, so I feel like water should have been at my house a week ago, not we're chit-chatting, "How are we going to get water to them, what, next week, in a month, next year, whatever you get to it?" It's emergent, like, right now. Like, I should go home tonight with water to cook and drink out of, to brush our teeth with, that's not out of my wallet. My daughter spoke earlier. She comes home at 1:00 in the morning from her emergency room job. I know I spoke to you on Tuesday. My son has been going to a different, his grandmother's to bathe. However, at 1:00 in the morning, I don't know whose doors are open for my daughter to come take showers at her, at safe residence. Emergent. It's emergent. She needs to clean off from her job. I did email this to you, and I want it on record, and I know that you have it televised as well, that I have not received answers to these. I've heard Plymouth Street residents have been receiving bottled water?
No.
Okay, so that was one of my questions. Is that true, and why isn't it coming up my street? So that answers that question. The northwest just spoke prior to me. The North Carver Water District is selling water to private corporations?
Yes.
So that's against the law?
And taking our drinking water.
And you're selling water, and I have no water, and I pay extremely more money than, from what I heard, it's $50 for 10,000 gallons. And I want that on record. $50 for 10,000 gallons, so...
Per thousand?
It's per thousand, but still.
That's cheaper than what I'm paying at my home, and my daughter has called me three times in the past month to tell me, "Is this humorous, sir?" And I didn't catch your name when we're around. What is your name, sir?
My name is Michael Paul Mary. I'm with the North Carver Water District.
And I'm entertaining you tonight.
No, I'm not.
I love that you're chuckling at me. Well, I'm almost in tears because my family is at risk.
May I please speak?
And it's an emergent situation.
I wasn't laughing at you. I'm snickering because these are the things I brought up years ago. I'm agreeing with you. I'm snickering, the reason why we're sitting here. I've been talking about for five years.
I'm almost in tears, and I see you laughing at me.
I am not laughing at you. I am not, please, I apologize. I am as upset as anyone in this room because I was talking about these very issues for the few people in this room that know me for about five, six years now. And I will answer the question while I'm speaking about bottled water. Yes, some residents in Plymouth Street are receiving bottled water due to their contaminated private wells that came about six years ago. So while we're waiting to tie into the North Carver Water District, we've been receiving bottled water, and some people are receiving a cash stipend. So I am not laughing at you, ma'am, please. I apologize for this. I'm rolling my eyes that we're sitting here now about this whole issue. The few people in the room, again, like I said, that know me, will understand I have never really been a huge fan of the water system we have in North Carver.
Well, it's failed.
I know, ma'am, I know it has.
And we're in an emergent situation?
Yes, we are.
And good news. I just found out in this meeting 20 minutes ago, my water is not potable. Will I arrive home to water on my doorstep? Because mine is contaminated.
I just found out this evening about this. I've not been notified, and I'm on the Board of Commissioners. I haven't had one bit of information.
And exactly, I heard behind me, shame on that, and that's why all the, my representatives that I've voted and elected into office, how is that acceptable that the person is finding out that's in charge? Because when I came to you guys, you said, "It's not us, it's them," but how come he's just finding out right this minute?
I think I speak for everybody here. I just found out a few minutes ago.
And again, I...
You didn't find out a few minutes ago. I was here on Tuesday with my bottles of water.
Yeah, I had no idea.
That wasn't potable water on Tuesday that I found.
We just found that out today, ma'am. I'm sorry, it was this afternoon we found that out.
The second I saw that we had brown water, I found out, and that was a week ago. So I don't care what you read, but what I saw with my eyes is what I saw a week ago, and that's unacceptable.
Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
I want to finish my thing, but go ahead, and I didn't catch your name either.
I'm Debbie Trumbull. I'm a small water...
And you seemed humored tonight, too, which I am so disgusted by.
Ms. Trumbull, if you could just speak into the microphone. Sorry.
I'm not at all laughing or anything. I am the owner of Small Water System Services. We've been in business for 27 years, and we operate towns and neighborhood developments and anyone, 25 people or more drinking out of the same well, water source, is a small water system, and according to the state, you need licensed people, and that's what we do. I worked for the Town of Littleton for 14 years, started this business, and now do just this, and it's 27 years now. I take, I take water quality very seriously. I have little grandkids myself, thank you God for that, little tiny ones, and they, you're not supposed to give kids water, drinking water that has high manganese in it. Now, let me, let me just set the stage a little bit here, okay? So the town of, the North Carver Water District has a water treatment plant, and the membranes and the, geez, we could do tours in there at some point, and people want to see how your water is treated, you know, there'd be nothing wrong with that. So the membranes that we're talking about, they are very expensive, the $209,000 to replace them. So it's not a willy-nilly, like a sediment filter in someone's home that you can get at a hardware store. This is because it treats so many hundreds of thousands of gallons of water, and they last about, they last about 10 years. So while we're, you know, while we're waiting for new membranes and all of that, I honestly, I want to tell you that our guys, they check the SCADA system for North Carver Water District at a minimum of six times a day. So there's, there's one, the first 12-hour shift will be Steve, and then the second 12 hours of the day is Greg. And then they check on there, and then there's some adjustments they can make to baby the membranes, to keep them going as long as they, as we can, until the new ones, till we get the new ones. That's what we're doing. Now, I honestly want to show you, I'm so glad I brought this, that we sample the water, we sample the water according to the state's sampling water schedule that they set for us. So once a year, we do what's called secondary contaminants, right? And that's a whole list of things we test for, and in that list is iron and manganese. So on May 4th, our guys took a sample of water, treated water from the plant, excuse me, and the iron was no detect, non-detect, there was no iron in the water. That's after the water's treated in the plant. And manganese was 0.43, and the limit for manganese is 0.05. So there was no iron, and manganese was creeping up a little bit, but it was still below the allowable level. That was last month. That was May, the last month. And we go, we look all of this, and we're like, well, we're still okay, the membranes and the guys, and we talk every morning and every, at the end of every day, about all the water systems we operate and what's going on where. And Carver's been up there for quite a while about regular conversations, and we're here seven days a week, 365 days a year, we're in Carver, minimum four hours a day, minimum, at least.
Except for not on the long weekend, because I wasn't able to get ahold of anyone over this past long weekend. this past long weekend?
We, we work 365 days a year.
Except for there was no response over the long weekend?
Oh.
That's a fact, that's not, that's a fact, that's not an opinion.
I think she got the office.
And you're saying-
Now I want, can I finish?
Well, I wanted, before you go too much further, you're saying it was-
I went to your house that day to sample that thing. Oh, yeah, okay. I, I think we should go through the microphones and-
I, I just, just, can I finish about the sampling? When, when, it, it, the, several weeks ago, we connected with the Middleborough Water Department, our guys know their guys on first-name basis, and we flushed, June 2nd, the entire, um, North Water Carver District flushed everything with the Middleborough Water. That means we, we closed down our plants, opened up the interconnection, and now on Middleborough Water, now here's something, Middleborough Water is chlorinated, and North Carver Water District, what leaves the plant, is not chlorinated. Why is that important? Because what chlorine is called, it's an oxidizer, and when there's iron and manganese in the water, and it's in solution, and these real low or non-existent, you know, it's either non-detect, that means too low for the lab equipment to identify, or, um, the manganese level 0.043, pots per million, pots per million, so that even, even that little, little bit, when you, when oxidized material, when, when the chlorinated water gets in contact with that water, then the iron and manganese starts coming out of solution, and it settles in the main, that's where the sediment in a water main comes from, that's where it comes from, right? It's a naturally occurring, settles out in the main. And periodically, all over the country, the world, you see water operators opening hydrants, you see jet-black water coming out, right, they, they flush that until it's clear, and then their coworker is opening the next hydrant down, the very next hydrant, they slowly open that one, slowly close this one, now they open that one full bore, and, and you're scouring the water main in between the hydrants, and you do the whole water system like that, the whole distribution system, one hydrant at a time, you're scouring the water like this, cleaning out the main as best you can, that's how that works, right? So, June 2nd, North Carver Water District's water distribution system is all cleaned out, not a peep from anybody in a couple of weeks, everything is great, the, the residents are happy, they, we're, we're still babying the treatment plant and testing the wa, everything is great. So then, it, it, not this past Monday, but the one before, so we start getting calls. So you get, in, in, it's summertime, it's construction season, in other towns that we operate, this kind of things happen, hydroseeding trucks pull up to a hydrant, they steal the water, so they're stealing, one thing-
You're saying stealing, but we already confirmed that it's being sold.
Okay, not every time that a hydrant was open was water being sold, there are also other times that hydrants are open and people steal water, that's the, that happens, and when that happens, they don't have a coworker going down to the next hydrant, opening it slow, and closing this one slow, they turn it on, they fill the truck or whatever they're using, and then they shut it off. What happens, the water's going down the main, right, normally, the water's going down the main, a hydrant opens, then the water goes this way, it goes out the hydrant, well, when you shut that hydrant off, the water's going that way, now the water starts going this way, it oscillates back and forth, and any of that naturally occurring sediment gets all stirred up in the water, and if you're the poor soul who happens to turn the kitchen faucet, or the tub, or the laundry or something on, when that cloud of dirty water's going down by your house, you're drawing that stuff into your house. So what, what we've been dealing with last week and this week, before I got today's lab data that I'll, I'll share with you, is we've been talking to the, to the town, to the district, to the state, to the Board of Health, and a bunch of you people, I think I've talked to in this room already, myself, and then some have called the water on call phone and talked to our guys, and, and what we really thought was the reason, and I think, not this week, but last week it certainly was, was, was people opening hydrants, contractors, different people, opening hydrants and causing all of this disturbance. In, in other, in another town, we, okay, we got dirty water calls over here, we send our guys out there, and they open hydrants, clear out the dirty water, and it's a day or two or something, everything settles down and everything is fine, but in North Carver, we, we don't have that capability of opening hydrants for flushing, because the, the town doesn't have the water tower yet, the water standpipe yet, that's still about three years away, that, that, that's how the system was built, it was built, so we use Middleborough's water once a year and flush the town. So it already happened this year, and then because all the water calls and all that was going on and everything, we said, "We gotta do it again." And Steve called Middleborough last week, and Monday was a holiday, and all of that, I mean, it, Middleborough, we don't own Middleborough, they're their own water department, "Can you please help us out?" And they said, "We can help you out on Wednesday." I mean, that, that's, and that's, that's the world we live in, that was, that was the, right?
That's still not okay.
Honest, I, I, I can do, we can do what we can do with what we have in front of us, let me finish before, before we go further. So, so Middleborough, thank you very much, we shut ours off again, and, and used theirs, and flushed again all last night, and so 3:00 yesterday afternoon till 4:30 this morning, Steve and a couple of our other guys were out all night and flushing, right, so we're thinking everything is fine, everything should be fine. So today, in my office, right around 2:30 in the afternoon, I remember when it happened, one of the, the girls that works in the office comes over and says, "Debbie, the lab just sent this," and I'm looking at it, and it's North Carver Water District, I had said to Steve last Friday, I said, "Let's see," this isn't one or two calls, there's a lot going on here, what, what's going on? And so he's talking to me about developments, and people opening hydrants, and all this kind of stuff, I said, "Let's see what's coming out of the plant, let's just verify in case anyone ever asks," and I'm glad we did, so last Friday, I said, "Get some samples out of the plant and out of the distribution system, and let's see what's going on." So Monday, this Monday, um, our guys take this, it was a holiday, but some places are still open, we, we took the samples this Monday, and I just got this data today. So when I looked at this, wrong page, thank you, Stephen, so when I looked at this data, I got the treatment plant sink, so this is after treatment in the plant, now the iron went from last month, non-detect, no iron, it went from, from zero to 3.12, which is really high. I gotta tell you, coming out of the ground, it's 27, so the treatment that we have has been doing amazing stuff, coming out of the ground at 27, the limit that's allowed in drinking water is 0.3, 27 is coming out of the ground, that's the enormity, who, someone just spoke about their own private well and the iron, there's a lot of iron in the ground in this part of the state, New England has iron and manganese, all of New England states deal with iron and manganese, right, in this particular area, the iron is, is, is incredibly high, and, and all these years, never saw it this high.
What I'd like to focus on right now is the emergent situation, you're tooting your horn, you're such a great company, if you were such a great company, you told me it's 10-year lifespan, why wasn't at year nine, the bladder, or the, whatever the thing is that's leaking?
Membranes.
Membrane is leaking, on, why wasn't, you're such a great company, you're doing so great, not really.
You know, I don't appreciate the sarcasm, I really don't, I don't appreciate that.
You just sat here, and I listened.
Let's be respectful.
I'm listening.
I'm, I'm here, I'm trying to explain to you what, you're yelling at me, you're yelling at me.
Folks, folks, let's be respectful, okay, we're having a public meeting here, let's just go back and forth.
Thank you, I'm trying to explain what happened.
Everyone has questions, we will get the questions answered, okay, let's just, I'll take a step back.
I apologize, I'm not humorous.
You're tooting your horn that you're such a great company, you're telling me that it's a 10-year lifespan on a-
Membrane.
On a membrane, so if you're such a great company, why not, at year nine, was that membrane ordered, and now it's leaking? That, that doesn't tell me you're a great company, that says you, you dropped the ball, and now there's a year to wait for another 10, town meeting to get approval for money, that's unacceptable, it's an emergent situation right now. Also, in the past month, there's been three times that, that I know of, I was at work and received a phone call at work from my home, that we had zero water, no notification, so, again, I'm not feeling the great company is working, it sounds like there's a lot of problems with this company, um, and I feel like, well, no, I don't feel like it, I know that it's been failed, because right now, we're in an emergent situation, and it's, nothing's being done, you're telling me what a great company you are, and you're not, I'm telling you that I wanna finish my business when I come up here.
What does "nothing being done" mean? You wanna tell that to this gentleman who was flushing all night, I mean, that's not fair.
Okay, ma'am, we're, we're not gonna go back and forth, okay?
I would like to finish my, because I would like it on record, my email that-
Please do.
That we, so we've confirmed that they are selling the water, and there's something about an urban renewal project in North Carver that's tied into this water main.
Okay, let us-
I want to know what, like, I feel like you guys are representing our town, and you guys should know all these answers right away.
Uh, we don't have all the answers, that's what we're trying to get to the bottom of. Okay, Ms. McDonald?
And my final statement in that email was that it's not being properly maintained, which I've just confirmed that if it's a 10-year life on a membrane, and we're on year 11, is that what I understand, so it's not being properly maintained, and the blame game, that's out of control, that my Select Board that have nothing to do with it and not, the people that are in charge are selling the water cheaper to who knows what, companies, private companies, this, this room is failing, the safety and health of my family, it is an emergent situation, we're on day seven, eight right now of the emergence, and nothing is being done, because you're saying, we're sitting here, but again, I don't have potable water at my house, so nothing is being done, because you're saying, maybe we'll get this, let's see if someone can drop off water, but I'm telling you, it's emergent, and it's been over a week, and I spoke to you on Tuesday, and when I left here Tuesday, Wednesday morning, there should have been water at my house, because you were all aware, because I brought you water in a bottle to see on Tuesday, so you knew about it on Tuesday, and still there's no fresh water at my house, and I'm sure if any of you sitting up there lived at my house with my two children, and had water that burns their eyes, or that they're going in other locations to bathe, and buying cases and cases of water over the past week, I feel like you would be doing something like you'd have fresh water, or like in the hallway, the gallons and gallons of water that are in this town building, but they're not at my house, and it is an emergent situation, and there's a lot of shady stuff going on in this town, and I, I'm hoping it's on record now that we know that it's being sold, we know that the company that the town is using to maintain the thing is inadequate, because we have evidence that it has failed us.
Thank you. I, I feel like we're getting a lot of the same questions from many of the same people.
Every household is under a fence.
Okay, I, I was hoping to, to work in getting some answers, but that's fine, we'll continue, ma'am?
I just, my name is Linda Markie, I live at 1 Lakingham Drive, I've spoken with Mr. Townsend several times, and I appreciate that you very quickly got back to me, when I know that our neighborhood has been posting all over Carver Health and Carver about our issue, and I've seen other town leaders posting about other things, and having crickets to any of our issues with the town water, so I appreciate that you did immediately get back to me, and that you followed up with me several times. I would just like to say that I called back in the very beginning of June, because we had water issues, June 3rd, I believe, was my first phone call, um, I called Friday, I spoke with the gentleman at 3:30, who told me it'll settle out, just run the water, I wasted countless gallons of water. I called back when that wasn't done, and I was told, "Oh, it's the on-call guy now, we're looking into it." I called Saturday, speak to another gentleman, again, told, "We're gonna try to shut down, um, some plant to see if it was the, the urban development project that was causing the problem." I called Sunday, I get the same, it's settling out, we're hoping to blah, 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 day after day, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. Where I'm having an issue right now is what, ma'am, you just said, when you brought up the fact that, um, this system was put into place, and that it can't handle itself, it needs to borrow from Middleborough occasionally to flush itself out, because it's waiting for a water tower that is three years away. Why on earth would you build a system? I tell my son every day, when he is telling me that he's getting paid in two weeks from his sales job, but he's buying this right now, and I teach him, "You can't buy something until you know you have, you have the money, you shouldn't put in a system until you have the water tower that needs to be built three years from now, that can support the system." This is completely unacceptable. I purchased my house in 2019, I was not, A, told that I am literally on contaminated dirt, that my well was completely unusable, I was already on town water, so I didn't even think to ask why I have a well that I can't use, I wish I did, that's on me, that's my blame. So my blame right now, to me, is that I didn't do enough homework on the town I thought I was buying a home in, that I was going to retire in, raise my grandkids, my dogs, who also are gonna need some water, so figure my dogs into your water plant, um, my dogs, my family, and now I'm thinking, I wanna sell it to whoever will take it before this entire town is so contaminated that my home is worth zero, and I think we could look at Flint, Michigan, other towns and places where shit like, sorry, stuff like this has gone down, that has devalued people's homes 100% and left us to hold the bag.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Michael Jones, 7 Lakingham Drive, and I've heard enough about the water, I had a serious safety issue, I run a tankless hot water heater on demand, and they work by flow, so, two things, as soon as I hear, see on the street page, hey, water's out, we live in a hill, it starts drawing back down, it activates the impeller, so I put in a backflow preventer. Last year, we had an outage, and my wife, not knowing, turns on the hot water to bleed the line, like I told her, bleed off the thing, well, there's no water going over 240-volt elements, melted my hot water heater, and thank God, she knew enough to kill the breaker and put it out, so if anybody's running a tankless hot water heater, be very careful with these outages, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Mulley, I got two addresses, 96 and 133 North Main Street, all due respect, I'm changing gears here a little bit, I'm, I'm representing a business, um, I just wanna make a statement for us, um, I know we doesn't need it, but I just wanna let you folks know that Michael Palomary is one of the answers to these problems, um, he's a very stand-up guy, and he's part of the issues, he's on the same water system, and he deals with the same stuff that all you folks are dealing with, so I just wanna say that right up, right off the bat, he's very responsive when I call him, questions and all that, but my question is, and I'm not beating you guys up, you know a lot more about water than I do, I just wanna know is, am I gonna be able to run my business? What's gonna happen to me? Because these folks have to bathe and drink it, well, I just have another element in between that, because I don't bathe and drink in it, but I feed my family with the money that I make, so what's gonna happen to me? I'm already over $12,000 in losses because of this, um, I have filter systems in my machines that are supposed to last me eight months, I'm changing them every three weeks, $240 a pop.
What, what's the business, Sharon?
They're coffee shops, and they're ice machines, I have all my coffee makers are all small orifice stuff, so every time I get slammed with seven, I had to call service, and, and $12,000 is being generous, and, and listen, I'm not gonna tell you that I know exactly for sure that my ice machine that just died is because of the water, I understand that things happen, but my ice machines are in a cooled area, they're away from yeast, I've been, I've been playing this game a long time, I've been playing the game of this water system for a long time, my biggest gripe is transparency, I have personally emailed you and called you, I don't know how many times, with zero response, okay, now I'm being told that I have to get on some sort, I have to get on some sort of email list, I'm sorry, there's a lot of customers here, but there's no reason why you can't use a reverse N911 or some sort of system, and we shouldn't have to do any of the legwork for that. When you guys are gonna be flushing, it should be at night, which it was, and I appreciate that, but we should know ahead of time, and we should have to lift a finger, um, and over the last year, I've already, I've documented at least six outages, and it doesn't matter if it's 10 minutes for me, because I'm getting slammed with the sediment every time, I don't know if it's construction, I don't know what it is, all I know is that I don't have water, and it's not clean, and I'm, I'm- And I'm, I'm a perception guy, okay? You can tell me that water's clean and I'll believe you because you know a lot more water about me. But you tell the customer in line that walks into my bathroom to use the toilet and it's brown, or comes out brown out of the faucet. And I can tell him to, I'm blue in the face with your, your video, he's not going to buy a coffee from me. And then the next thing you know, here we go with social media. And I'm, I'm done. And we're just getting over COVID. You know, it's just, and, and everything, one after, thing after another here. So that's, that's my gripe. I just want more transparency and I want to know if I'm going to be able to run my business, period. I need to know. And, 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 and if I was you folks, I'd be begging Middleborough to take us back. Let's pay them for the, for the foreseeable future. Because these folks, and I'm not blaming them, but they don't have the equipment in place. This water tower is key. In three years, that, that, that's a wish that that's going to happen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, Dan Badger, 165 Plymouth Street. For those of you who know me, know that, um, I'm one of the residents on Plymouth Street that's been asked to connect to this water line. And, um, as a result of that, um, and because I have, I do have some background in water filtration work domestically and abroad with small community systems. Um, I've had long conversations with neighbors who, um, who actually professionally are involved with drinking water systems and understand the capacity issues with the North Carver Water District. And, um, Mr. Palmary is one of them who, who has some knowledge in, in these areas. So I'm glad to see that he's part of the solution. Um, we've shared some issues with, uh, with the town. And, um, some of those have to do with, and, you know, getting involved with, I'm sorry, I don't know if people can hear me or not. Um, doing the blame game thing is really only gotten us so far. And to be clear, um, if you are a Carver resident, um, none of this should be news that the capacity of the, of the North Carver Water District system is lacking. And with the expansion talk and development talk, um, for that, for that business district, um, it is a, um, it is a wishing and hoping plan that it'll be able to handle the capacity required, um, for that, uh, for, for the residents' use. And, um, and from an operations standpoint, I find, I find that these issues are, are fairly reactive and not proactive. So one of the things, one of the problems is, um, I hear some people, different people saying, well, you know, we've taken this as far as we can take it. Um, everybody here, everybody's here because they care about the problem. Um, some people may view, uh, some people here because, um, they're trying to cover their backside. That may be true, but that is not a, that's not part of the solution either, right? So, um, you know, when you hire a lawyer, um, you really don't want your best friend, you want a shark. And when we are talking about, um, a, a, a water system that's providing potable water for the safety of the residents, um, you know, I, I would like to, to know that the company handling the water system, uh, is dealing with it in a proactive way, in a way where, um, you know, I think everybody understands who has a point of use or point of entry system that, that they have a lifespan. So I guess my question, and I guess that'll be answered and it's been asked, but, but was there not a label on the membrane or not something in writing that would indicate, um, that there would be a need for replacement of that membrane? And why that wasn't an item, um, that was, that could have easily, very easily been, uh, put in, uh, as an article item, uh, for town meeting? You know, I'm, I'm a nobody in this town and I was able to put a couple articles, uh, in for some issues in town meeting. Something like this, uh, a pretty big ticket item. Um, I'm, I'm beside myself that, that, um, that this is, uh, this is not an oopsie-daisy. This is a really, really big problem, operationally speaking. Um, in terms of cost, um, I, I believe that there is some enterprise fund that, that augments the cost for, uh, operating for, for this, um, for the system. And I understand that some of the water needs to be sold to help cover operating costs and so forth. All those things are sort of truths of any, of any system. However, um, when being on the outside looking in, um, I can say that, that those, not, just doing the quick math, the numbers aren't working. And, and, um, we need help. Um, and the pointing fingers thing isn't going to work. I think it's, it's, you know, going from, going from health department to different departments. Uh, this is, I, I think I feel comfortable in saying that this is an us problem, it's a town problem. It's not, it's not a select board prob- that, that, I don't think anybody on the select board is an expert in water filtration. I mean, we all have ideas of what that means. Um, I, you know, people out in the audience, uh, don't either. And so, um, we spent a lot of time and energy, um, you know, talking about how we care about the community and what that all means. But the way to show that is to get the best, get the best people we can get that are problem solvers with this particular issue. There are ways of finding monies, there are ways of, I know the town doesn't have a grant writer, but there are grants that pay for things like this. And it's not something, and again, just over the, just over, I think since I've been sort of involved with dialogues about these issues since I want to say about 2019, um, when it came, when it came to light that my, my well had, uh, contamination issues. So, um, I didn't come to find out that, that the town knew about it long before I was informed. And when I, we bought our house over 10 years ago. Um, it was a known issue that was not expressed to us. So, um, you know, I think, I think our realtor probably is, is hiding from me to this day. Um, but, um, you know, the shifting to, shifting to Middleborough, for whatever reason why that didn't work, um, that does need to, that does need to happen, but that is not a long-term plan. That is, as they say, a lipstick on a pig. And, and I, I really feel like this problem will not go away. And the more informed the public is about this, the more, um, you're, we are all kidding ourselves if you think this, this tide is going to settle. It's just not. And, um, you know, I, I, I volunteer my time with groups like Conservation and different, different, um, things having to do with the environment. I'm happy to step in and help out in any way. I assure many residents here would, would do the same if, if there was some way that we could be a part of it other than causing everybody in front of me to circle the wagons and worry more about liability, 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 instead of focusing on solutions. I'm hoping that tonight, that some of that'll, um, bear out. Um, but just so you know, a, a plan has to involve how this system's going to function, not just now. And not an explanation as to what happened, although that's appreciated. Um, but also not necessarily looking for someone nice, looking for somebody who's going to, you know, for example, you know, Steve, you took a sip of the water to show that it was good, to make people feel good about it. That, that is proud from a PR standpoint. I don't know about that. From a scientific standpoint, that's, that, that would be a no-go in terms of, of what I would want people to, um, to know. They want to see data. They want to see data. I appreciate that the, that you had some samples, uh, some results. But the thing is, 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 um, and also we appreciate your explanation in terms of what does happen when people flush the line. The problem is, um, you know, there are a couple of things. One, there, there are not check valves on systems going, going actually to houses to mitigate issues with water being taken out. That's a, that's a low-ticket item that should be part of any connection. Um, that is, that is a micro solution at the far end, right? Going, working our way backwards, um, you know, we need to have, um, other aspects of this dealt with in terms of hydrants. Uh, nobody should have access to hydrants that aren't officially, there are, if they can, they can find, they can find wrenches on Amazon. Well, we can find, easily have lock boxes and, and key, special key locks for those hydrants. So only officials can access those hydrants. That is also a no-brainer. The fact that people are stealing, commercial groups are stealing and causing this problem to just make things even harder for the North Carver Water District, it blows my mind. You know, there's more I have to say about that, but, you know, I want to, I want, I, I don't know if, I don't know if there's, uh, an opportunity for a response to whatever answers or solutions that may be coming forth tonight. Um, but I can, I can say that, um, that I've been a, I've been a pretty nice guy in working with different committees and stuff. Um, I'm prepared to be not such a nice guy. Um, moving forward, uh, there are some solutions that are in hand. I am no, I am no expert, although if I can see some low-hanging fruits solutions and they're still not being done, that's going to be a really big problem. And anybody in the way will be very clear that, um, that, um, that I'm not happy. And, um, I'm somebody who cares about this town, somebody who cares about my neighbors. I know you all do too. This is a scary thing. It's a, it's a safety issue. Um, a lot of people are scared, so they're, they're, they're talking to you from emotion, so don't get offended. Um, people are just feeling what they're feeling. But it's very real. It's not just feelings. It's as a result of not wanting babies to be contaminated, you know, which is a pretty, a pretty major thing. I know that's why we're having this meeting, but, um, you know, let's not let this be a one-and-done and hope that it goes away because it won't. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My new neighbor.
Yes, hi. Hi, I'm Emily Collins. Um, I live on
Your na- name, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Emily Collins, 3 Arrowhead Lane. Um, I lived on Great Meadow Drive for about six years. Um, recently moved to Arrowhead Lane with my new neighbor on June 14th. Um, I'm not as invested as these folks here are educated, but I am nine months pregnant. Um, I have been drinking the water. Um, maybe I was a little naive, um, excuse me. But since then, I've had a tremendous amount of swelling. Could be related, could be unrelated. I just am really disappointed that, um, this has clearly been an issue for a while and you guys have no plan in place. Um, and I'm just really disappointed. And I just thought it would be, um, helpful for you guys to see that, um, these are all real people and, um, babies and families. And, um, I'm just, I'm just disappointed in the town.
Mary Dormer, 162 Plymouth Street. You all know that I have a contaminated well and that I have been fighting for the last five years along with Mike and Dan to get clean water. Somebody said something earlier that you're turning off the North Carver Water District. And I understand why you're doing it and that you're going to give them bottled water, but how are they going to shower? We shower every single day in contaminated water. Both Dan and I have PFAS in our wells above the state limit. Mike has it below the state limit, but the EPA just came out with a report that said that PFAS is not acceptable at any limit. It's also at the North Carver Water District. Are we going to put a filtr- a filtration system in there? And I do want to address what Linda and Dan said about not knowing about the contamination on their property. The town was supposed to put deep restrictions on all of the homes downgrading of the landfill. And you failed to do that too.
Good evening, folks. Not as eloquent as everybody performing.
Just your name and address, sir?
My name is Steve Harris. I live at 2 Arrowhead Lane.
Thank you.
Across the street from Emily. And, uh, very emotional. Moved in last year from Salem. I sold my homestead of 95 years. I've lived here a year today. Today was the day we closed. I just put my house on the market because we can't drink, we can't bathe. And now, I mean, we don't get any help, you know, and nothing for nothing. But this reminds me of Flint, Michigan. Okay, it's not lead, but it's dangerous. It's all dangerous. I live right next to Kirk. Okay? He came over two days ago and asked me about my water. He, he's got iced tea. We got iced tea right here. If I was selling iced tea, yeah, great. But folks, it can't happen. We pay oogles and oogles and oogles of taxes. I pay the same taxes I did in Salem. I moved from Salem, we have the best water in the state. I don't have a cavity in 67 years. What's going to happen to Emily's baby? I don't know what else to say. I'm done. Do something, Mike.
I, I know I already spoke and I don't, I just also want to, Linda Markey, sorry, Linda Markey, 1 Lakingham Drive. I also just wanted to ask, because I did hear this as a bit of a rumor and it's also concerning. Are we also going to get a 2.5 rate hike come this fall as well? Because with all this happening, if you tell me you're going to raise one penny on me, you better tie me up. Because I do not, will not be in control of what I will do.
The district took the, the rate hike off the table last month.
Should I get my downwater shut off? Anybody here? The wells are just I, I've got a filter, I paid $3,800 for four months ago. Two months ago, I had the filter jam. I had to pay another $500 for three new filters.
Sir?
Matt Thomas, 4 Captain Perkins Drive. Um, I feel for everyone here. Luckily, my well, I'm one of the ones that have to hook up to the system. I'm glad now that the, you know, the town's been dragging their feet. Um, I, I couldn't imagine coming home, I work in the healthcare system, I, I couldn't imagine coming home to brown water. I'd, I'd go nuts, I really would. I just want to say, I am extremely disappointed in the lack of transparency, the lack of information. For all of us that are getting hooked up, I believe there's 19 of us, we've been, 23, we've been going to meetings for the past, what, year and a half? We've been asking for rates, we've been asking for tests, we've been asking for who's going to hook us up, when are we going to hook up? And people don't come to the meetings, right? So I leave for work, one day I see there's, they're tearing up Plymouth Street. I call up Town Hall, oh, Matt, you knew we were talking about this. Okay, whatever. A week or two later, they're tearing up my street. How am I supposed to get to work? Oh, Matt, you knew this was going to happen. Okay, whatever. Last fall, hey, Matt, uh, this is Larry Page, he's going to dig up your yard. It's just going to be a small little trench, we're going to hook up your house. You don't have to hook up the water, just bring the line to your house. We'll take care of the rest later. Okay? So that happened, well, if you come by my house, you see the big trench that's 10 feet wide, 150 feet across. Luckily, the DPW for this town is fantastic and they, they, they cleaned it up for me. I had to lay my own seed, $150 with the seed and lime and everything, but, you know, because they really said, just hook up to the house. We'll take care of everything later. There's no answers. Emails, no answers. I mean, this is years, right? I got people that are on my street, there's only six of us. And I ask them, what are you next? I don't know, nobody tells me anything. You don't know when you're being dug up? No, I have no clue. It just stopped. Uh, we don't, we, we, we email the town, we get nothing. I call the town, I have to complain, I'm loud, right? And I get the, oh, you knew we were going to do that, don't worry about it, we'll find you answers. There's nothing. We've been very patient as well. And once again, I feel for these people, I, I don't have, my well, right now, knock on wood, last time they tested, is still fine. My neighbor's isn't. So maybe now, I don't know, mine isn't. And I have a hydrant right outside my house. I'm on the top of the hill, I'm the top of the hill, so I can only imagine water runs downhill if something happens. There's, I can tell you, there's no one-way valve, there's just a blue pipe sticking out of my basement now. And I have no answer. So I got a blue pipe, a big trench, nobody's telling me when it's going to get hooked up, who I'm hooking up to. And now you're telling me there's no more water district. Well, we have a well. We have a well that they tell us that we're going to have to abandon, even though I'm cleaning it. Correct, correct. So we may be able to keep our well, we may not be able to keep our well. We may be able to have both, but let's just get that tube into your house, Matt. Okay, cool. But now I got a tube in my house, I got no water coming from North Carver, I got a possibly contaminated well, and nobody's answering a damn question. No one's answering an email, no one's answering me when I call the phone, nobody's answering anybody else's questions.
Well, that, that's why we're here, to try to get answers to your questions.
All right. I like to hear.
Is there anyone? Is there anyone else?
Yes, you do.
My name's Paula Hart, and I live at 212 Plymouth Street. And I'm not here to put you down, and I'm not here to knock anybody down. I just want to tell you how I feel. When I was a young kid, I lived in a town called Woburn, Massachusetts, and I'm sure a lot of you have heard about it. It was a great little tanning town. And when I was a kid, I used to ice skate on orange water. Nobody told us it was bad. Okay? I lived in East Woburn, which was the worst place in the world. In 47 years, I came down with cancer. I don't ever, ever want anybody to go through that. With what you're telling me now, is I'm drinking contaminated water again at the age of 72. So I am in remission, and I've been in remission for several years, but that can, you know, you go through cancer, you're never over cancer. You are always a time bomb. Your body is always there, and it's always within you, no matter what you go through. No matter whether they tell you it's gone, we've removed it, you're in remission, you're okay. It doesn't happen, it comes back eventually on a lot of people. You know, she's got a beautiful little baby that's coming. What's this water doing to her beautiful little baby? And in 47 years, is her beautiful little baby going to turn around and find out, oh, wow, I drank contaminated water when I was a little kid? I don't want anybody in this town to go through that.
Paula, honest, I, I can tell you, honest, I, I take what we do very, very seriously. And up, up until just like a couple of weeks now, there's the iron and manganese, that's what we're talking about, not volatile organics or synthetic organics or heavy metals, not, not, nothing like that, but naturally.
It's tweaking a membrane that's been failing.
Can I, can I just talk to, can I just talk to Paula for a second?
Let it talk, please.
But she, I, I'm just, she's tweaking a membrane that's.
All right. Folks, I think, I think what we should do is let everybody get their thoughts out, and then we will get answers to your questions, okay? Let's, let's get everybody finish their thoughts, then we will get answers to your questions.
Well, I, I want to put your mind at ease, the, the, what you, what was in the water in Woburn when you were growing up there, that, what we're talking about naturally occurring iron and manganese, that's not man-made stuff. And, and yes, the membranes should have been sooner, yes, yes, I, I can't deny that. I, I can't deny that. I, I don't buy them, you know what I mean? I, but, but anyway, what I'm, what I'm saying to you is, the, that this is, this is brand new. What, what ju- this just happened, that we're getting iron and manganese breaking through the membranes and coming out into the water, that, that's what, I don't want you to leave the meeting thinking that you've been drinking this for months and months and years and everything. That, that hasn't happened. This is just brand new, honestly. I, I, I called, I got this paper, and then I, I called Kevin, I said, all right, listen, you know, I, I have to tell you something, and I, I called the state and all of that, so it's, so all of the authoritative people that we answer to know about this. And honestly, it's not that we're not doing anything about it, we're, this, there's nothing else important, th- this is it. The equipment, Steve, Steve made a good point. He said, you know, you can go get your car tuned up, and then you drive off the lot, and the engine blows up. Well, was that because of the tune-up? The, the, we were running the treatment plant. Yes, yes, the, the membranes, yes, they can't get around that. But I, I don't want anyone walking out of here thinking the water has had iron and manganese in it, crazy levels, for weeks and weeks and weeks and months and months and years and all that. That hasn't happened, please know that, that this is a brand new.
Chloroform.
Chloroform. Or, I can talk about, chloroform bacteria is, is, is ubiquitous, it's, it's found everywhere. When it's found in a drinking water sample by the lab, the lab is obligated to look further to see if there's anything else in there besides that. Chloroform by itself is not harmful to your body. It's not. I'm not lying. I, I couldn't lie to you, that's the truth. Chloroform is not harmful in and of itself. Chloroform is an indicator pathogen, that's what it's called. So if there's chloroform, the lab is legally obligated, and they do, they look, make sure there's no E. coli in the water, no fecal, nothing like that. So that's what, so there was a chloroform hit, we call it, right, a positive detection, but there was no E. coli, there was no fecal, it, it was, it was that, that's where it ended. So that.
I, I just don't want.
Can I, can I just speak on that just for a second, just because you missed a detail on that?
I missed a detail, hold on, excuse me, Stephen.
Sorry. So when you get the chloroform hit, you have to do a secondary sample, because it could be, the guy had dirty hands, oh, because you had dirty hands, whatever. So when we did the secondary sample, there was no, no detect in that. So it could have been a bad sample.
I understand.
But, so I just want to say on that sample, that the gentleman behind you asked about.
I've been in this town now for 29 years, and I, I love this little town, I really, really do. And I, in the 29 years, never had a problem like this. I mean, oh, yeah, it shuts off occasionally, and when they flush it occasionally, you get brown water, but that happens everywhere, and, and that's how I feel. But this just seems to have elevated so badly, and in my brain, I'm sitting here seeing Woburn, and it's like, I don't want anybody to ever go through that. Let me tell you, it's, you know, and it's not just me. I have many family members that died from cancer because of this. I have friends in Carver that have also gone through can- through cancer. And I don't want to see them go in, go out of remission, or, or go back into going, having to go through this again. And nobody ever wants, you don't want to go through chemotherapy, believe me. It's, it's not a fun thing. And I just really, really would like this town to think a little deeper and, and help us, because that's what we need. We need help. We don't need arguments, we don't need pettiness, we don't need calling each other names. You can do that for all you're worth. What we need is help, and that's what we're asking for. We're not asking for anything else. I don't have anybody close by that I can go over and take a shower with. If I want to go to somebody's house to take a shower, because I can't take it at my house, I have to drive an hour and 45 minutes away, because that's my closest relative. If I want to wash clothes, because I can't wash them at my house, I have to go to a laundromat. But you know what? If I have to do it, I have to do it. But I want some help. And I would appreciate it if you would all put your heads together and come up with a solution for us. I would appreciate it immensely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
All right. All right, let's hear.
Mary Dormer, 162 Plymouth Street. You were saying that it's the iron and manganese, and I don't think that the North Carver Water District would be shut down for that. So do you have an EPA, do you have the EPA on notice that says why it's being shut down? Can we see that?
I, I, I don't have that, what I.
So who's telling you that you have to shut down the North Carver Water District?
We.
You're saying that we're shutting it down so that it's not going to the homes.
So, so the water commissioners can certainly speak for themselves, but because we don't want to, we don't want to keep putting the water out there that we're putting because of the elevated iron and manganese, they're shutting the system down to stop what's happening. And, and that's the plan, that's the plan. And Kevin's going to speak with the town of Middleborough about that. That's, that is the plan. That's been the contingency plan, you know, if the membranes go before the new ones come in, that, that was the, that was the plan. That is the plan. So because it's iron and manganese, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be heavy metals or pesticides or, or, you know, chemicals or something like that.
Those are secondary contaminants. They're not, they wouldn't.
I agree with what you just said, they are secondary contaminants, and most of the time, we just call them aesthetic issues, the water's a little tinted, run it, it clears up normally and all of that. But, but what the, the lab paperwork I got today showed that the breakthrough is, is a lot higher than what's allowed, and so we don't want to put that out there. And I, when I said to Kevin, I told, I told DEP, Kevin, I told them what's going on, because, and I use the words Flint, Michigan, I said, I, I said, we're not, I'm not, I'm not sitting on this. I got this at 2:30, I was on the phone with the, with the state at 2:45. It was, it's like that. First, we verified the state and all, and the state said, you got to put out a notice, that's why I brought 50 copies with me today, I wasn't sure how many people were coming. And, and it's about manganese in the water, and it's about children and manganese in the water, and not to feed children mag-. So we were talking about that, he goes, we're just going to shut it down and, and talk to Middleborough, and that, that's why. That's full transparency. I, I have nothing to hide, I'd show you.
Kevin, have you spoken to the DEP about shutting down the North Carver Water District?
I have not, and I, and I haven't had an opportunity to, to speak with the superintendent of, of Middleborough either. I, I need to get buy-in from these, these people before I can, and I know Mike's here, so we will talk before we leave.
Okay. And I do, I do, you know, you guys keep talking about these contaminants that are secondary. There is PFAS over at the coal property, and it's below the state level right now, but that is going to change, and it is going to be a problem, and I want everybody to get ahead of that. And I think everybody's well in Carver should be tested, and I think everybody's water in Carver should be tested. It's, it's all over Carver. It's at the Dunkin' Donuts, it's at the Housing Authority, it's over on, in South Carver. It is everywhere, and it's above the state limit. And it's not okay that people are bathing in it. It's in my son's blood, it's in my blood. He's going to, to an environmental doctor at Children's because of this. This is not okay. Something needs to be done. And when, when you do fix up the North Carver Water District, we need a filtration system, or the town needs to pay for a filtration system for everybody in this town. There are ways to get it out of the water. This is not okay. It, it hasn't been okay since 2017, when Mike and I found out about it. And we have been waiting patiently for you guys to do something, and nothing has been done, except to give us bottled water. But I still have to bathe in it, I still have to wash my clothes in it, I still expose my children to it.
All right. So I think we have a, a few issues here that are apparent. The first issue is obviously, I think, Mr. Tracy and Mr. Fennessey, I think everyone here would agree, is the very short term. We have, we have to get people water. So, Mr. Fennessey, do you need any kind of vote of the select board to begin providing bottled water to, to folks?
I would suggest the board make a motion to provide water to affected homes.
And can that motion also include, because obviously, there isn't going to be a shipment of water an hour from now.
Right.
So if people need to go to the store and buy some water, we can get them reimbursed in the same, thank you.
I make a motion that the select board, as immediately as possible, provide bottled water to the residents that have been affected by this situation, and if we can't get it to them by tomorrow morning, they will be reimbursed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Can I add an amendment to that proposal, or add to it? And we've been paying for water for a week now, because we haven't been able to drink it. And I know I wasn't saving my receipts, and I know I'm going to get billed, my water bill anyway, and they'll shut it off if I don't pay it, so.
Mr. Chair, thank you for that, ma'am. Again, we, the North Carver Water District sends the water bills, so I think I should direct that question to you guys. I, I have no idea whether they can be reimbursed for the water since this happened.
There is, there is a mechanism within the district's rules and regulations where people can appeal. Once they get a water bill, they can, they can, in writing, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna encourage people to do this.
And we're gonna, I just.
Again, it's, it's kind of the best we can do.
So what, could you just repeat what it is they have to do, Mr. Tracy?
If you would, if you would, in writing, you could, you could make a request at, and you could leave it in the, in the planning and permitting department, because Jill handles all of that stuff. We can, we can look at that at our, at our next meeting. We'll probably make a decision, hopefully, before the end of the billing cycle, but that's, that's coming up in a, in a, in a week or so. But if we could, if we could get the information out there, and we'll prob- I'll probably try to have something put into the bills as well, you know, if people are seeking reimbursement for, for things, you know, get it into the office, and we'll get it at the next meeting.
So could you give us the dates? So if a resident has been buying bottled water, could you give us the, if they don't have a receipt, approximate dates, because?
Yeah, approximate dates, approximate, approximates. Put it, put it.
Could, no, I, my question is, can you give that to us now?
We can.
Well, I asked the chair to go for that when the water was off. I asked for $10, and I didn't get boo, so.
Okay, so I, I guess I was trying to address the, the lady's question about, can we, we, can we be reimbursed for this particular incident?
She's been buying, residents have been buying water for the last week or 10 days roughly, so.
May 13th, it started.
May, May 13th, does that sound, okay, so the start date would be May 13th?
Yes.
So that would be something that they would put on the request to, to your commission?
Yes.
Okay, May 13th. And then, until they receive the bottled water from the town, they would continue to be reimbursed until that happens?
Yes.
So, Mr. Tracy, I know, I know there's an issue with the, with the membranes, and obviously that needs to be addressed.
Yes.
Do we have an approximate number of what the cost to replace those membranes is?
Yes, we do. The 205,166 and 95 cents.
So, Mr. Fennessey, to, to, to move this process along as fast as possible, can you investigate whether we can move some money from the ARPA funds we received? I think water systems are one of the acceptable uses under the ARPA funds.
They are.
So that we can move that and get those, get those ordered now, so we don't have to wait for a special town meeting. If we can't, then we'll call the town meeting, but I think we could be able to move.
We can, we can. It's infrastructure, obviously.
And, and I'm going to ask the chair, is it 30% or 50% that they need?
The, I asked the, the small water systems to rework this, because I know that, I know the director of finance had some issue with the way it was, was phrased. It is, it's 50% upfront and then 50% upon completion, so. And there's some language in here that if extra hours are, are, are taken up, that there's a, a cost per hour, and it's, it's pretty standard language.
And this is proprietary equipment?
This is all proprietary equipment.
Suez.
Suez water, it used to be GE, Xenon. It's, it's, it's proprietary, and, and as a result, it's, it's all protected by patent and, you know, all those things that make everything more expensive.
So, Mr. Tracy, is it, can this water system only take those particular membranes?
Yes.
Can I say something real quick? Because I'm really, this is.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Bogart, absolutely.
Can I ask a question? Okay. We've been working for you for a while. This problem came out of nowhere. There's money in the enterprise fund. You know we're good for it.
Yes.
We're going to work with the ARPA money.
Yes.
Why can't you just order them today, instead of waiting for the town to figure it out? Because you know we're good for the money.
I'd have to write a check for $100,000.
Right, but you know we're good for the money.
The North Carver Water District has the funds.
We do.
Yeah, like, we have the money, so why do you have to wait for any of us to figure it out? Why can't you just place the order in the morning?
Because they're stressing a 10-year filter out of the 12 years to save themselves some money.
I know, but like, you know.
Right, you're making profit on this, this is why I was just coming up to say.
I know, but that's like.
And now they're going to bill us extra hours, that might take the vicious.
So, Mr. Tracy, is it, is it correct that for the North Carver Water System to spend Is it, is it correct that for the North Carver Water System to spend the money on the membranes, that you need an active town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's why we're taking action.
But they, I know, but, but they couldn't just, they, the company couldn't order it out of good faith, knowing that we were going to pay for it, like...
So, I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think, if I may, Mr. Chair...
Like, just, just knowing, like, they know they have it in stock.
Ms. Bogart, if I, if I can interrupt. So, I think what might be going on here is that, it's good intentions. The North Carver Water District has the funds. We'd have to wait some more for a town meeting in order to authorize that. If we could just, if the Board of Selectmen could, or Select Board can just give them some ARPA funds, the district could pay us back.
That's exactly the plan. That way, we can get it done now, instead of waiting.
So, can we make a motion to do that tonight?
Do you, do you need a motion?
I make a motion that we immediately use the ARPA funds to pay for these membranes.
For the down payment.
For the down payment. And that, in good faith, the North Carver Water District will reimburse us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I guess it would've been nice if you just did it out of good faith and didn't make them do it out of good faith.
The, small water, small water systems just simply doesn't have that deep pockets.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Mr. Fennessy, can you keep us up to date with progress on, on that? Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I could add one more point, or a couple of points?
The chair.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say that there were a lot of things that I agreed with, that people said here tonight. I, I remember when I moved to town, there was a gentleman, may he rest in peace, named Frank Mazzilli, who rumor has it, the stories went, that he built the North Carver landfill. It was an unlined landfill. This happened back in the 60s, 50s, and that all that water flows north-northwest. I remember when we capped it. I, I only moved here 30 years ago, but I, it was a very distressing thing to me. I used to be this town's conservation agent. So, I, I am extremely disappointed about this. I also want people to know that personally, as a Select Board member, I became aware of the most recent contamination because Ms. Dormer contacted me. And Mr. Fennessy was not here at that time. Mr. LaFawn was not here at that time. We had a different town administrator at that time, who did not inform this board. So, and I'm not passing the buck. That's just a fact. So, I wanted you guys to know that, and...
I told you then, in 2017.
In 2017, yes, you did. And once again, as I told you then, I was one...
2022.
Excuse me. I was one, excuse me, ma'am. I was one member of the board. And as you may recall, those votes were often four to one, and I was the one. The other thing that really distresses me is that it took, I don't understand why the membranes weren't ordered after the eighth year, if we know they're going to be only good for 10 years. And my other suggestion, and I thank you, Mr. Badger, I didn't even think of lock boxes. I, I just, I can't believe that businesses are out there stealing water. That's outrageous. So, let's get the lock boxes. Let's, like, do it tomorrow. We have a Carver lock for the Fire Department. Let's just do that. And the other suggestion is to contact these people using a reverse 911, if that's possible. I don't know how the Police Department function.
So, we found out that the water's not potable, not drinkable. Was anything sent out to the rest of the people in town, or was we the only people?
I don't know. I don't know.
So, people are out there, you guys know the water's not drinkable, and people are out there still drinking it?
Well, not everyone is on, excuse me, not everyone is on town water, but it's a good point. It's a good point.
Okay, if there's one person out there who's not here who's drinking poisonous water?
That's a very good point.
Mr. Fen, Mr. ...
If you guys are involved with that, why wasn't something like the reverse 911?
There's also businesses here in town that are cooking food for people who live in this town and other towns that are on this water.
Right. So...
I water my garden.
So, so if I, if I could just finish, Mr. Chair, so we, we've made a vote already for the bottled water. That's gonna happen, and you're gonna be reimbursed for the bottled water.
Who does it go to?
Excuse me? We just did it tonight.
You have to buy it and then get reimbursed?
No, 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 excuse me.
No, we will provide you with water. The town will provide you with...
I made the motion, Mr. Carter seconded it, that you will, as fast as we can get on it, you will get bottled water for free. In the meantime, those of you who have had to buy bottled water, there's a process that Mr. Tracy explained where you can get reimbursed for that. That's all. The second motion that I made, and I think Mr. Carter seconded it as well, was that we will use ARPA money upfront to pay for the 50% of the membrane, so that can be ordered as soon as possible. I don't know if you can order it Friday, tomorrow, but that would be really nice. And the next point that I'd like to make is that, I don't know who would be responsible for the lock boxes, but shall we have a motion for that? Is that something appropriate?
Can I just...
Yes.
The only thing I would say to that, and I'm not saying that's a bad idea, I just think that should probably be run through the Fire Chief.
I was gonna suggest, yeah, that we discuss that with the, with the Fire Chief.
Right. And that's why I mentioned the Carver locks, because that's what they call them in the Fire Department, so that they had access to them. So, I don't know, if you want me to make a motion for that?
I, I think we probably should hear from the Fire Department before we do anything. Clearly, it's an issue, but I, I think we better...
It's an issue, because if someone is illegally opening the hydrants, and that may be part of the problem, that needs to stop.
It is.
And my very last thing is the reverse 911. So, that people who don't have emails, who don't have computers, who may be blind, as we've heard tonight, will have some way to know. Presumably, everyone has a phone, hopefully. Is that something that we can authorize tonight, Mr. Fennessy?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion that we institute a reverse 911 system.
To the, the whole town, or do you, are you thinking the users of the...
Well, the, the North Carver Water System.
Everyone who's using the North Carver Water District water.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I spoke to you about that earlier, but yes. Okay. We have a motion...
Because it's restaurants in that area, then people...
That's, this is not just residents.
Well, they're on the North Carver Water.
This is not just residents. It would be businesses as well.
Everyone on the system.
With coffee shop, and anybody.
Shouldn't the whole town of Carver know since they're using that coffee shop and businesses?
Right.
Exactly. The whole town.
That's why I feel like transparency is lacking. Like, I get what you're saying. It's us.
Yeah.
Why not everybody? Because I feel like the whole town should be here tight, because it's savage and now it's outrageous.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Huens, but I think part of the reason for the reverse 911 system is not just for this current situation, but just so you could be notified if, first, if your generator goes down, or the water system's gonna be out for a couple of hours, that you could be notified, hey, you know, we're sorry, there was an issue with the well. It's gonna, it's out at 1:00, but it should be, we expect it to be back at 3:30, just so we can notify you of that.
Or they're flushing their system, or whatever it is they're doing.
Right. And that's not something that the whole town needs to know about. That's just something that the users of the North Carver Water System.
Well, I, I mean, I guess that's a matter of opinion, but I mean, I have a well. I don't, I don't necessarily need to know that. As a Select Board member, I do, but not for my personal home. But I mean, that's up to the board.
That should've been the first thing, you know, before this whole meeting picked off. I mean, people, you're gonna be here for an hour and a half, and people are at home drinking the water. They're gonna try. That should've been the first thing. Hey, by the way, everybody...
Well, once again, that's, we're here to solve the problem, and that's something that I'm, I just made a motion to do.
We have a motion for the reverse 911. Is there a second? Yes, yes, Shelby.
That we institute a reverse 911 system to let all, all the residences and businesses know if there's an issue with the North Carver Water District water, and what that issue is specifically, and the time we're flushing at 10, we're going, it's back on in the morning. Any particular instance of any issue that concerns the North Carver Water District's water to all residents and businesses.
All residents, or residences on the system?
I think on the system, but again, that's up to the board. Do you guys wanna do it for all residents?
I, I think we should do all residents.
Okay. It needs to be clear in the message, though, that this is just North Carver Water District users, but sure, all residents.
Perhaps we need two, two different reverse 911s. Maybe we need one for just maintenance issues in the North Carver...
Yeah, we could set that up separately.
You know, with the flushing, or something like that, and then we need something else of a greater, maybe we need two of them.
First one to just get it out to everybody.
So, two, two separate 911, reverse 911 systems to the whole town? Is that what the board is thinking?
Well, I think one to the whole town, and one to the users of the North Carver Water System, two different.
Particularly to flushing and those sorts of things.
Maybe one for maintenance and one for emergency?
Yeah. Yep. That sounds good. Okay, that's the motion. Got that, Shelby. I'm sorry.
Shelby, are you, are you clear in that motion?
One more time.
Okay. So, I'm making a, a motion to institute two reverse 911 operation, setups. One to the whole town indicating emergency, meaning the water should not be used, or people shouldn't drink it.
It's a big issue, yeah.
And the second would be more maintenance, flushing, those, the kinds of issues that might happen more frequently, would be sent to just the users, residents and businesses of the North Carver Water District. That's my motion.
All right. So, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And, and just one other thought I had, Mr. Fennessy, that we may not be able to take care of tonight, but I think we should, we should look into putting in the budget in some way, is I don't think these folks, or folks on the North Carver Water System, should have to, on the weekends or whenever, should have to try to deal with small water systems. I think they should deal with somebody in the town, who deals with town, small water systems on their behalf. And if, if we have to look into a stipend, or adding to a position to, whether we create a Carver Water Commissioner, or, or call it something else, but I think we need someone in the town who, who deals with small water systems on, on the residents' behalf, and they don't all have to make individual calls. And that person could also be in charge of the reverse 911 system, and, and the different ways of notification when, when things happen. So, they have someone to go to. They know where to get their information.
And in that regard, it's interesting, Dave Seidenthal and I had a meeting today to talk about that. We have a new employee coming on, and maybe adding that as their, part of their duties on the facilities maintenance, the facilities management.
Yeah. I, I think that would be a good idea, because somebody has to be responsible for, for, there's, all these systems are great, but if somebody's not responsible, then it just falls through the cracks.
Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Badger had something to add.
Oh, I, I didn't see you over there, Mr. Badger. I apologize.
I was just waiting till the, the wind-up doll finished its thing. So, yeah, no, I, one of, one of the items I had was, I put quarterback. I was like, who is gonna actually, once, once a plan is in place, who's gonna actually quarterback this? Only because everything seems, has been so compartmentalized, and that's created a lack of communication. It's created a lack, an inability for efficiency of functionality and operations. And that's, again, not a finger-pointing thing, but that's just...
No, I agree.
That's what's flushed out.
Somebody has to be in charge.
Right. The one thing I was just gonna ask regarding that lockbox thing, could there be some preemptive vote on that in lieu of, you know, some type, I, I can only see it as negligence if the, if the chief, I know that he would not say no, but, but just so that he knows, so there's not, there's not any more back and forth.
Yep.
He knows this body, this is what this body wants. Is, is that okay? Could there be some type of vote on, on that with the contingency that, with, assuming the approval of the chief?
I think we could absolutely entertain some type of motion, as long as it had a proviso to have the chief.
I move that we institute lock boxes on all the hydrants, depend, conditional on the Fire Chief's approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Sorry, the, the last thing, and I promise I'm done. So, there's been some good dialogue, but we, this is, this is just dealing with the immediate issue, right? So, I'm sure that there has been, already been discussion, well, I would hope, that there's already been discussion on next steps and so forth, so...
That's our next step, Mr. Badger.
Okay. Well, then, I'm done. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Carter?
Just to the folks that, that can't even say we know what you're going through, but every once in a while, we have those power outages where we do lose water, and one day is crazy, so I can't imagine what you're going through. Having said that, the $205,000 for the membranes, I, I have one question for, for the North Carver Water District, because I don't ever recall seeing this on the capital plan. We do a 10-year capital plan. Was that on there? And if it wasn't on there last year, because you didn't have the number, was it on next year's, was it on the year after?
It was, it was never intended to be part of the capital plan. The, the reason why the North Carver Water District would consistently tuck away its retained earnings was because we knew that at some point in time, we were gonna need these things. We did run out of time. The, again, the, the quote for the membranes came through. Too late for us to get it onto the Springtown meeting. I had already approached Mr. Fennessy and Ms. Moklin about, about other, other options. So, you know, it was always intended that the North Carver Water District would use its own money to do these capital improvements.
Okay. And, and having said that, the worst thing we can do now is to tell people we're gonna spend the $205,000, and they have to wait possibly 25 to 30 weeks. Is that, is that the lead time on this?
That, that is the lead time on these...
So, let me advance 30, let me advance 30 weeks, and it's up, and it's working.
Yep.
Is this going to categorically solve this problem, number one, and does it also take into consideration some of these other things that I'm hearing tonight, which is PFAS, which I don't know anything about?
I don't believe that the membranes do PFAS.
The, the treatment for PFAS is carbon, carbon filtration. So, I do not, I have, have not heard that anywhere in the industry, that membranes take PFAS out of drinking water, but I know the engineers that we work with that have been installing PFAS treatment in, in a bunch of our other systems, is that it's carbon. So, they're putting granulator, granulated activated carbon systems to take care of PFAS.
And, and what is that from a standpoint of?
But for, for a town, for, for the, for larger municipalities with, you know, tens of thousands of gallons a day, that, that's a different feat of engineering that we haven't dealt with that yet ourselves. That large, that, a large systems, but that's the, that's the, the, the treatment for PFAS is carbon.
So, so, Mr. Chair, if I could interject, Mr. Tracy, has the North Carver Water District looked into ordering carbon filters?
Not this... Well, that's, you have to have an engineer to design it, and then submit the permit to the state, and then once the state approves it, then you put the bid out for the equipment, and so that, that itself takes a good amount of time.
I see.
The EPA has set, has set aside $6 billion for small towns to ask for money to combat this issue. So, there are grants that you guys can get for this.
Sir?
Michael Vompis, 266 Tremont Street, South Carver, Middleborough Water Superintendent. I'm gonna be jumping around, but let me make it clear. I can't make all these decisions tonight. I have a board I gotta report to. I will get off, when I leave here, I'll report to Mr. Jermaine. I'll call him tonight. But I, I showed up a little late. My apologies. So, Ms. Trumbull, you're telling me we're shutting the system down? There's no more wells?
It was, it was my decision, and again, I'm, I'm gonna have to consult with, with my board on this. If we're putting iron and manganese out into the system, and it's, and it's causing problems, and you can see the bottled water, in an abundance of caution, it is, it is, it is my opinion that we should probably scale back operations at the North Carver Plant.
So, I'm gonna go out on a limb here.
Yep.
I'll have that water turned on before 9:00. But I need to talk to you about manganese and iron. Did you do something, you started to talk about, you did efficiency of this filter. Did you do any other sampling in the system that I need to be aware of?
I, I can show you. I can, we can talk about this.
These people have been here already too long. So, maybe we'll discuss this after.
Thank you, Mike.
I know I'm jumping around. PFAS, there's a lot of, I don't know if the town has a grant writer. I'm involved in Carver in many years. I got $1.3 million to remove lead, lead services in the town of Carver. I just got another one, just for engineering services, for moving PFAS on my own. And there's a lot of them. Going for more money. They, they're handing away if you have a grant writer. So, I will send you some links. The EPA just came out with a new site. Two, I know we're talking about iron and manganese, but ended on PFAS. PFAS, carbon filter, there is certain membrane filters, reverse osmosis membrane, but the xenon filter, suez filter will not remove PFAS. What's the number of PFAS, Ms. Trumbull? I, I don't know.
I heard it was, it was still pretty low. We haven't...
Yeah, it's low. I don't know that.
We haven't exceeded, yeah, it's, it's there.
Below 20 parts for the state's standards? Well, so, you know, mandated at 20 parts per trillion, if that's the answer.
Yeah.
No, but I spoke to the DEP, and they're changing those numbers.
The EPA came out with a thing last Wednesday. Did they want to put the, a section of PFAS, PFO, down to .004 parts per trillion? As of right now, I can't even analyze that load. So, it's gonna be under review. The final numbers won't come out, but I, you are right. You are correct. They did come out with almost non-defect numbers. So, back to iron and manganese, I, I didn't know the system was gonna shut down. I, hopefully...
Can I interrupt, Mr. Vompis? Can you speak into the mic? Because they're probably not hearing you outside of this.
Sorry about that. So, when I leave here, I'll get on... So, when I leave here, I'll get on, phone Mr. Jermaine, keep him updated. My board doesn't meet, they meet Monday night, the agenda's already full, they won't meet again until July 11th. Things we need to start discussing are IMAs, remember the meter pit, we talked about a long time ago.
Yes, a long time ago.
I may have some backlash from some of the people in the town of Middleborough, but this is an emergency. I'm gonna go out on my own limb, and, and, and I'll, I'll deal with that as needed, but I didn't realize you were just gonna shut the bubble off.
I, you know, I, I appreciate you showing up here tonight, Mike. Again, this was, this was late information to me, came in late this afternoon, and out of a, like I said, out of an abundance of caution, I don't, I don't need iron and manganese getting out into my system. And, and I was, I was kinda hoping we could touch base a little bit before this, this meeting to talk about this. I, I get it, you're, you have PFAS issues on your side as well, so, you know, I needed to, I was, I'm glad you showed up tonight, and we'll touch base.
The plan was to ask you first, but we, we said that's what we're gonna hope, we're all, you know, that's the contingency, if, if Mike says we can, so...
How was the water today, any feedback today from the water?
It's right there.
We got breakthrough, through the membranes, and I can, I can show you this, so we...
That's from the membrane, or that's system water?
That's system, yeah.
Excuse, excuse me, just, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Mr. Bumpus, I just wanted to clear up, because there's a variety of people named Jermaine. Mr. Jermaine, you're talking about is the Chair of the Middleborough Select Board?
Yeah, Chair of Middleborough Water, Florida Selectmen, and Chair of Water Commissioners. They act together in, in the town of Middleborough.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Like I said, we're gonna have to go to work, I was planning on a day off tomorrow, but IMAs, we have to revisit.
Yep.
Sampling, we, we may have to discuss that, but...
The DEP's already decided they're gonna start a new sampling program, so...
Who are we gonna deal with with the DEP?
Uh, Jim McLaughlin, once, when and if, you know, once we go to Middleborough Water, then, then North Carver becomes consecutive to Middleborough, and you know that, and then they'll give us a different sample schedule, because we won't be on this water, we'll be on that water, so...
And you're talking 30, 40 weeks?
That's the, that's the lead time.
I'm finding a lot of supply and train, demand, so we're probably staying a year.
Just to get, just to get the quote, was months, I'm, I'm not exaggerating, just to get the quote, you know? COVID, who wasn't at work, not on our end, on the Suez end, it was, it was awful.
Once, once I realized that we had enough money to do this, I set them on to work. It took four months for us to get the quote.
Mr. Bumpus, we certainly appreciate your help.
You really, really do.
Mr. Carter?
Sorry, can I, I just wanted to manage expectations, you, you said something great tonight, and you said 9 o'clock tonight, you were gonna get the water turned back on, but, but what is really the timeframe that these folks can know that they can have clean water?
Well, that's why I gotta work, Ms. Trumbull, I don't know the analysis she's done, I hope we don't go, we're going into a level two drought in Southeast Massachusetts, I'm dealing with that on my own, we may have to mandate some sprinkle ordinances for, for demands of...
I've already, I've already planned on that, we're gonna, we're gonna...
Well, that's fine, I'm just saying, do you have a ballpark, worst-case scenario?
We may have to do some more flushing, like Ms. Trumbull talked about, you guys, North Carver Water District does not add chlorine. I add chlorine for disinfection for bacteria of the coliform she talks about. And then when it hits the iron, it oxidizes, turns from Fe2 to Fe3, and that's when it comes out, into solution. It's, it's there a lot when it's, I know it's a little bit of chemistry class...
I believe, I believe everything you're saying, so... Really, I am.
When you hit it with an oxidizer, it comes out.
But, but all, all I'm saying is, we have to come up with an issue, and, a resolution, we have to resolve this issue between now and whenever you say these guys can have clean water.
I can, I can speak to that.
And I'm just trying to get, is it a day, is it a week, I, I, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I, I can speak to that, so, DEP, Mass. DEP, Jim McLaughlin, when I talked to him and his people today about, about this notice going out today to all the residents, and can put it on the website, and how we'll distribute it different ways, but, and I said to him, okay, so, we go on Middleborough Water, and then, and then what about the, you know, we put out another notice telling everybody, and he said, well, we've got, it's, it's a matter of rules and regulations, right? You've got iron and manganese too high in the water right now, he said, you switch over to the other water system, he says, then you take some more samples, he goes, and then another one or two days, you take some more samples, and after you get, I think it's three acceptable samples, then we can tell every, we'll, we'll send out another notice that the water is safe to drink. So, that's the kind of timeline, and tomorrow is Friday, and God bless you if you can make this happen that fast, and then we'll start sampling on Monday, so we could do iron and manganese sampling next week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and then have that data, give it to the state and say, we wanna tell everyone now the water's fine, so, so it's, most likely we'll be bef...
So, you're saying that could be a week?
If we're sampling Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, then we would get all of that data, probably Monday, I would say Monday, we get it from the lab. I'd have all of, all of that.
Monday's the 4th.
Monday's the 4th of July.
Monday's the 4th, you're right, so Tuesday the 5th, thank you, and I'm sorry, yeah.
So, you're talking a couple of weeks?
Is that, by the time, you, you gotta hook it up, we gotta flush it all out and everything, because there's, obviously, there's still iron and manganese in the water main, so you're gonna, even though you flushed last night, then we turned back on to North Carver today, so introduce some more iron and manganese in there, so you gotta, we gotta do all that again, I know you're happy about all of that, but, so, we'll, we'll do all of that flushing, and then grab those samples, and as soon as the lab gets to us, gets that back to us, I mean, it, you know, could be, could be the next day, and so as soon as we get, I'll ask the state, how many clean samples, passing samples do you want, is two enough, do you have to have three? And so as soon as we can get them, then that's, that's the answer.
You'll make them aware that this is an emergency situation?
Yes, yes, so we'll try to, we'll try to make it happen next week, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I feel I'm on pretty good terms with Jim McLaughlin, he's head of Southeast District, he lives in Middleborough. I don't talk to him once a week, but some of my foremen do. So, I, I feel on good terms, and he, he understands the town of Middleborough, he lives there, he, he worked there. So, I will give him a call tomorrow, along with Ms. Trumbull and, and see.
We appreciate all your help, we truly do. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tracy, do you or Mr. Palmary have anything you, you wanna add at this time?
I, I just want everybody to understand that we share your concerns, this is as distressing to me as it is to everyone else, I, I, I share your concerns. And I, I, you know, we're open to make everybody whole, again, and this is, you know, you know, the, the good news is Mr. Bumpus was here to help us with that.
And, Mr. Tracy, Mr. Palmary, if I can, just, if you need anything, anything at all, from this board, to help expedite whatever you folks need to do, please get in touch with us, so we can get it.
I think we've done a huge amount tonight.
And I appreciate your cooperation, this was a meeting that was hastily put together, because it was an emergency, and I appreciate everybody's cooperation in, in being here, like, you know how important I felt that we all get together and, and do this. Sir, if you could just, this gentleman's at the microphone, then if you could just come up to the microphone, so people at home can hear as well, okay?
Just one, one more question, and I gotta be open to my business tomorrow. It may sound selfish, but I gotta feed my kids, and I gotta be open to my business tomorrow.
So, I would say, wait until I talk to Mike after, because if he opens tonight, and I have to flush tonight, then you will be fine in the morning, if that's what he can do.
Okay.
Because once I flush, it's gonna dirty it, so you gotta let it settle out, but you should be fine.
You wanna get his number, you guys swap numbers?
Well, he's, he's on the phone right now, I can hear him.
Well, you know, you know where I'll be until 11:30, and then somebody can reach out to me, I'd appreciate it, just let me know, because I've got 30 employees that I've gotta let know if they're gonna work or not.
Mr. Fantasy, can you work with Mr. Tracy? Mr. Fantasy, can you work with Mr. Tracy to make sure that Mr. Mahoney's is...
Let's meet right after this meeting, okay, we'll talk about it. Also, if I may, through the chair, you should make a motion to seek water from Middleborough for the district.
That's your motion?
Okay.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Okay, West Wayne, 6th Lake Inim, so when this all gets straightened out, we get our Middleborough Water, and it's flushed, and it goes back to drinkable, is there any way we can stick with Middleborough Water? Because North Carver Water District has nothing been, been nothing but problems. Small Water's letting 10-year filters go, 11 and 12 years just pushing it for revenue. I mean, I was, I lived in here for five, five years, every, when we were on Middleborough, not a problem. So, why can't we just stick with what works, instead of risking going back to something that's had constant problems?
Mr. Fantasy?
I don't think Middleborough would wanna do that, because it's their, their water, and they're protecting that too, and they're going through a reduction of the water they have, so, so I think a short term, a year, that's a short term, that's doable, I don't think it can be forever.
Yeah, but like, North Carver Water District, their pressure doesn't even meet state minimum guidelines, and their hopes and dreams on a water tower that may or may not go through. Like, the water pressure isn't even at legal limits, so why, how can we legally go back to a system that doesn't meet state guidelines?
I'm gonna defer to you on that.
Again, you know, Middleborough has its own limitations, at some point in time, North Carver's gonna have to take back over again. And I really, you know, I know the, the standpipe might be three years out, but, you know, we've, we've got what we've got, and we're gonna do the best we can with it.
I get that, but like, why should people pay for water that doesn't meet state minimum guidelines?
It did up until, up until Monday this week, when we grabbed those samples and got that data today.
Yeah, but you guys should have had those filters in your possession at nine years.
I'd love to address that, so, about small water not saying we need new filters, that didn't happen. I work for the town, we work for the town, and it's not my finances, my revenue that we're talking about here, it's ratepayers' revenue, it's, it's town money, it's water department money. So, we need a couple of hundred thousand dollars to get this thing going. When you have 93 customers, and they, they're talking about, they don't wanna, they don't wanna 2.5% increase, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of money.
Is the membrane, like, 10 years, is that just a guideline, or is that what they're...
That's a guideline, sometimes they go sooner than that, it depends on what comes out of the ground and what beats them up, it's, it's, they're filtering.
So, why wasn't there anything, like, prepared ahead of time for that?
So, what we say, and I'm not throwing you under the bus here, it's, it's, it's a, it's a budgetary thing. You say, we're gonna need new membranes, and today they're 125, in a few years it'll be 150. Well, now they're 200, but they've been banking money away to buy new ones. They've been banking money away to buy new ones, so it's, it's really a budgetary, you got 93 customers, and you need a $209,000 fix, so everybody pony in.
Yeah, but so then, that's what I'm asking.
Who makes what decision? That was way before... Honestly, I'm pretty sure that was well before anybody in this room, I honestly, it was way before, I'm not, what do you...
So, if we don't...
It's, it's what, it's what, it's what the system that we have, we didn't, we didn't just say, hey, let's put in a big problem and see what we can do about it.
Like, if the North Carver, if the North Carver Water District didn't have the funds to replace anything, like, major parts that went wrong, why did they open in the first place?
That, that's way before me.
Because like, when I change my oil in my truck, I buy a filter for the next time, so I have it, I don't be like, oh, it's gone, oh shit, you know, I can't find it anywhere, so I'm stranded, but they're doing that with the water supply, so they should've had funds, in case funds, if this blows up, that blows up, way ahead of time. It's prepared, preparedness fund, it's, you know...
Well, and if I could, I think some...
Because what if we had, what if Middleborough wasn't gonna give us water? You're supposed to give families, like, cases of water for six to eight months?
No, and I think one of the things, you, you have to try to take things from everything that happens, right? I think one of the things we may have to take from this incident is that maybe we have to think about putting, setting up some type of replacement plan, not waiting for those membranes to, to fail, but maybe having some type of replacement plan.
Which is, which is why we've been tucking away our retained earnings.
Exactly, guarantee if you ask Middleborough Water, they probably have a stockpile.
They have more than 93 residents, um, hookups.
It doesn't matter how many, it doesn't matter how many residents you have, one person without clean water is too much, it doesn't matter how many people you have.
I agree with that.
So, don't open the North Carver Water District if you can't supply water, no matter what happens. Because what if Middleborough wasn't around?
That's a, that's a town decision, honest, that's a whole town meeting decision, yeah.
And honestly, small water, small water, you shouldn't have taken them on as a customer if they didn't have the backing, because then it makes you guys look bad, because if you, you guys are the ones that replaced the parts, and everybody's, you know, crapping all over you, because...
Thank you.
You don't, you don't have the money to replace them.
I, so, several times over these many years, we've done that. That's all right, you're good for it, that's all right, we got this, right? So, we buy, this just happened somewhere else, we buy $50,000 worth of pots, this is a good client, we're all set. I, I kid you not, yeah, we decided we're not gonna do that, and my mouth dropped open, I said, I have $50,000 worth of pots sitting, taking up space downstairs, in the guy's way, that we've been waiting months for you to tell us you're gonna pay for it, and here, they're sitting here, we, we're sitting on them. We've already paid for these things, and they said, no, we're not. So, I've, I've been there where I'm sure Carver is good for it, but I've, we've done this, laid out all kinds...
But what he's saying is, you don't take someone on as a client, like, it's like banks, they escrow the money for your mortgage and your, and your taxes, they don't say, no, he's good for it. You don't take someone on as a client if they can't provide the tools to facilitate and fix things.
We, we've been here for quite a while now, we appreciate that, and, and there was a plan in place, they, they put money aside to do this, I'm not, I'm not kidding, I'm not blowing smoke here.
They put money aside to fix the membranes?
To buy, to buy new membranes, to purchase new membranes, they've been doing it for...
They've been saving for years.
For years, because they knew this comes.
You've been saving for years, the money, the full purchase price of the membranes should've been in the account at like, five years, and they should've been purchased at the eight-year mark, because I buy stuff all the time, and like, everybody else knows, in the past two years, prices of pretty much everything has doubled. So, like, any pot that needs to be replaced, filters or anything like that, the money should've been already in the bank before the North Carver Water District even decided to open off of Middleborough.
I, I think, I think we've reached this, this, this point, and, and obviously, you folks have some things you need to discuss at your next, your, your next meetings. Sir, is it something, is something new that we haven't discussed?
I'm still the guy with the blue pipe.
So, I, I appreciate Mrs. Hewens, I, you're getting stuff done, and I appreciate that, thank you very much. You're the one whose hand keeps going up, and I appreciate everything you do. And I appreciate Mike with Middleborough as well, but I'm still the guy with the pipe. Now, I just heard that it's now 30 more weeks before that little blue pipe does something. My question, now that I actually have people at a meeting... Hi, how are you? Thank you, Matt Thomas, Captain Perkins. Now, I have a blue pipe sticking out of my basement, okay? You guys magically get your membranes, and we get the lockboxes, and everything's fixed in 30 weeks, okay? I still have a blue pipe, now we're gonna hook up 23 new people to the system that obviously has some issues, and three years down the line, maybe we'll get a water tower, plus, what is that, a million square foot facility? 1.8 million square foot facility going in, less than a mile from my house. So, with that building, that I assume is gonna be on the North Carver Water supply, yeah, great, and the 23 new houses, if we're already talking about backwash, and if some contractor opening up one hydrant can cause a meltdown in the system, okay? So, we're talking about one guy filling up his truck causes a backlash, we're gonna add 23 new houses and a 1. something million square, so if you guys get the membranes and the lockboxes, can you guys handle the new square-footage building in the 23 houses?
No, I can't, I can't even run two sprinklers at my house, and you got 23 houses on top of that?
Mr. Chair?
Okay, yes.
Could someone answer this gentleman's question?
Can someone answer the gentleman's question?
I'd like to address a little bit of what's gone on, if I may, Mike Palmary, 164 Plymouth Street, I'd like to speak to you as a resident, not as a member of the commission, okay? First of all, I truly, truly am sorry if you thought I was laughing or smirking at you. What I was smirking about and rolling my eyes was here we are after, excuse me, it wasn't 2017, it was 2016, the well contamination I brought to the town, okay? The blue pipe is the water service line from the water main extension, okay? That's what he's referring to, he's one of the people that's gonna be tying in to the North Carver Water District, okay?
Possibly, no one's told us where the water's coming from.
Right.
Yeah. So... Or when, or how?
Right, so that's a good question, that's all in flux, okay? The reason why I wanna speak is a citizen, you know, a regular citizen, you know, the community, not the commission, is my wife and I moved here in 2010, with our adult daughter, two grandchildren, I've been through this all before, I rolled my eyes because I've been sitting in... I rolled my eyes because I've been sitting in this town hall numerous times discussing with numerous, to numerous people, these very issues. I, from the time I moved to town, the North Carver Water District has been a hot-button issue for a very, very small group of people. The first person my wife met was someone that lives on Plymouth Street, um, down on the Middleborough side. She was going to get charged a 60-something thousand dollar betment when the system was put in and I believe at the time it was Cisco that was semi-committed to build where we're going to do this other development now, was going to put in a water tower. So I think people that are waiting for a water tower, it's not there yet and there's no guarantee it's going to happen in three years because that hasn't been permitted yet. Okay? My cautionary tale is this: stay on the town, stay on me, stay on Kevin. Attend meetings, attend water district meetings so you can be informed as this stuff happens. I spoke to a couple of people that are here tonight when this first issue first came out. They had no number, no person to call, okay? I provided that to them, to small water systems. They have my email I created to deal as a water commissioner. I was, I was bamboozled tonight about what's going on as all of you. I had no knowledge, other than people had brown water. I was getting notified as the people were that was signed up for town notifications. No one called me, I had no knowledge. For that, I apologize, okay? I will make it a point to be more informed whether, if I got to drag people my way so that I'm informed of this stuff, so that I can reach out to you. Because I'm going to do this job as a commissioner, now speak as one of the commissioners. I was elected for a three-year term. If I can't do a little bit to fix, to make it a little better, then I'm out in three years. Because I don't want the job. But someone's got to do it. I was going to meetings to the North Carver Water District, when I'd be the only one in attendance. I never saw anyone. I tried reaching out to people, no one would show up. We, a few of us in this room reached out, tried getting people here about the contaminated wells and the extension to these 23 new people that are going to be signing up for it. No one showed up until the very, very end. You got to stay engaged, okay? Go on the town website, whatever the link is, I'm not a tech guy, there's a link you can click with the town website that you'll be notified of all meetings and agendas and agenda changes, okay?
I just have to beg to differ. I went to the Tuesday selectman meeting and to find out when that meeting was, that website for the town in Carver is not user-friendly. And I, I would say I'm not super techie, but I'm also not stupid. And it took me more than 20 minutes just to find the meeting time of the selectman. So I, I never got any communication until I went to the meeting Tuesday night to know that you people are, have numbers. I had none of that information.
All right, all right, folks, remember, we are, we are in Area 58, so if you want to speak, please, we need to use the microphone.
So I, to my wife's point, because I hear her. We have gone to meetings. We, we've gone to every 23-house meeting that I, we, we've been to meetings. And we show up to the meeting and they go, "No one showed up," and we all leave without answers. All of us, all 23 of us, we were here. All of them. And we have no answers. So I, I understand, I appreciate what you're saying as a resident. I want to talk to these two just about the question, because I saw there was a disagreement. So ma'am, my question to you and then to Kevin, but my question to you first. If we get the membranes and the lock boxes so people stop stealing the water, will the system, to your knowledge, be able to take on 23 new households and a 1.8 or a 1, 1 million square foot facility?
Is, that's a great question.
Thank you.
That's a great question. When, when the state approves a well for public consumption, every single well all over the, the country, right, that, that's, the state regulates, they give them a water withdrawal amount. They give you a set number of gallons a day that you can take out of the ground. Because there's so many people in the world, you have to put a limit on it, right? So in, in this, in this spot, in this well, in this radius of circle around it, you can take out X number of gallons a day out of the well. Now if you want to exceed that, because you want to add in, the towns grow and all of that, then you have to talk to the state about that. We want to do this and this is our capacity. Now if we're going to exceed our capacity, we need you, to the state, we need you to give us permission to take more water out of the ground. And some places, it's very water-rich, the well that they have, that they can have that. And so they'll expand that protective area around the well. And they, they might say to the town, "You got to buy up a couple of these places so revert it back to woods and meadows to keep the water clean." So there's, in other words, there's a whole process you go through as you want to expand the, the, increase the volume of water you take out of the ground. So in this particular case, I don't have that off the top of my head. I don't know that. Well, Steve does. Thank you, Steve.
So right now, we put out 40,000 gallons a day. The plant's capable of 100. The new project was, what, 40,000? 41. So if you're 23 houses, averages 20,000 gallons a day, it'll be at limit to handle it.
Okay, because I was told at the last meeting that the project isn't done, it's expanding.
That's just a.
Can anyone talk to that? So it's not just Captain Perkins, Heinz Avon?
The only thing I have to introduce.
That the last meeting, the geologist said that it's going to keep going towards High Street?
Was it?
That there's other houses that could be affected? So if we are at limit.
Mr. Tracy, do you have any information on that? I don't.
The last homes that I heard of were, were Captain, were on Captain Perkins and not all of them.
I hadn't heard of any expansion of the, of that.
All, all, I'm sorry, all of Captain Perkins was not affected, but all of Captain Perkins has the lines going to their house and.
Right.
We don't know, because no one's telling us anything about rates, price, where it's coming from. So all six houses are being hooked up.
And do we have to ban our wells or all?
And no one's told us if we have to abandon our well, whether we are affected or unaffected. So, so I am glad for you guys, I really am. I'm scared for our future, because I don't know what it is. I, I don't know. I have, I, so 30 weeks from now, possibly will be at limit.
Right.
Correct? Is that what you're saying? I don't want to put words in your mouth. So 30 weeks from now, if everything goes right and we all hook up and the, the, the building takes its thing.
Right, yeah. Whenever they're done, when that project's done and you guys are on, you would be peak season at limit.
At limit. So no more further additions possible. I think, folks, I think we're getting a little off-topic here and I don't want to. Not necessarily. If you were part of the 23 that have been asking for two years for information, sir. But I think we have an agenda item that's posted. And I think we're very deviating from the agenda.
Can you tell me what the agenda is? What, what does the agenda state, sir?
The joint manager discussed recurring water issues and possible solutions.
Correct. And so what is my possible solution for being affected by hooking up to the water?
I, I think we're talking about very long-term solutions.
So when do I get my answers, sir? It's been two years.
I, I'd have to ask, defer to the North Carver Water District.
Of course. We are deferring again. Again, after two years.
That doesn't come before us, sir. Kevin, can you?
Exactly what is it that you need to know?
Are you serious? Okay. Two years ago, we were told that we may be affected and we were getting our wells tested.
That's a border health issue.
Okay. And then they said that we are going to be added on to the North Carver Water System. That's your issue?
It is.
Okay, fabulous. Then last year, they tore up Plymouth Street and my street and they put a blue hose in my yard.
Right.
Okay, great. Now, last month or this month, they dug up my house and they put it and they said, "You're going to be attached to the North Carver Water District." That's you? And tonight I heard that you guys are shutting down for 30 weeks. So how is that not affect me?
Our water is going to be replaced from a different source.
How does that affect me?
The way it happens, the houses are weak.
When are we going to get, when are we going to get hooked up and who are we getting hooked up to?
And where are we going to be?
We, we were told that some of our wells are poisoned, so I understand there's brown water, I was saying they're getting the, so we're dealing, we, we have, we're not connected. We can't get connected because it's shut down, but we may possibly be infected with wells that haven't been tested in a year. Correct? And that's not an issue for tonight?
Also, that blue pipe, the PEX, it's, I'll have to say in the ground, if that's the pipe they're using, in 30 weeks, that's going to blow up because PEX is UV light from sunlight, it turns to garbage.
Awesome.
So when you hook up to the water main eventually?
Yeah.
Legally, from that main to your house, you're responsible for. My neighbors had theirs blow, I don't know, 10 years ago, washed it all out. So if they use that existing pipe that's sticking out of the ground.
Yeah.
From sunlight.
Well, and the winter and the, and the snowplows and everything else, right?
If that's, if that's.
Correct, yeah.
If it's under the ground.
So, okay.
Then know where your water meter is.
So that's why, this is pertinent to this meeting, that's why I would like an answer. That's why it has to do with you. Right? I'm getting hooked up to North Carver. North Carver's shut down. In 30 weeks, we may be at capacity. So how is that not an issue for tonight? Kevin, do you have any answer?
I, I don't.
I just want to address one thing. In 30 weeks, you won't be at capacity, because what they're talking about at capacity is if that 1.8 million square foot warehouse goes in. That would put the system at capacity.
And that's going to be several years.
Now, that's not.
No, no, no. That's what I'm saying. The system at capacity would be the additional, right now, what Steve said is the additional 23 homes plus the usage that was calculated by the engineer for the 1 point.
But that's with the water tower.
For the 1.8 million.
I'm sorry, sir. Did you say that was when the building was completed, it'll be at capacity, or what they're using for construction and using now?
No, no, when that building is complete.
With the water tower or without the water tower?
The water tower is just going to give pressure. The 100, the 100 gallons a day, 100,000 a day is through the membrane, has nothing to do with the water tower. Water tower is pressure.
Just to add down pressure to that. Didn't, they said they can up it to like 130, ask for a special?
It's not a real, it's a water. I highly recommend it as a recent widow, that have town water with a contaminated well. If you are hip-hops and want to structure it, that's fine.
I just would like some answers. I've called town hall many times. I've written many emails and I get nothing.
Let, some, I, let me, let me help with that. Let me, let me jump into the thing. And Kevin, when I just said, "Kevin, what, what is the holdup here?" And Kevin just said, "The board of health was spearheading all this." So I will call them tomorrow. Steve has all the meters to, I, I said, I just asked him, "Steve, what is the holdup?" And he goes, "It, it, it's not us, we're, we're waiting." I said, "Okay, who's waiting for us?" So I will call tomorrow.
We're not, just making that clear.
No, no.
We're holding.
Yeah, but, but I, but I, but I want to help fix your problem. So I will call Kevin Forg at, at Board of Health tomorrow and I will, and why don't you leave me your number before we leave?
Oh, he has it, but I will, yeah.
But please leave it to me and I will call you. I will call you directly, okay?
We would like actually information of if we want to join the North Carver, which I'm not sure I want to do right now, but that's, that's the holdup.
I, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to start you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask one more question for Ms. Trimble?
Yes.
At our meeting on Tuesday night, Mr. Fantasy gave us the, first he gave us the daytime phone number to call small water systems.
The office, yeah.
After Ms. McDonald left the meeting, Mr. Fantasy did some more research and found the emergency number. Could you please give these residents the emergency number, after-hours number?
I, I'd be happy to do that. I can do that, right?
We want to call them anymore. We want to call somebody from town.
We, and we did, we did talk about that. We did, excuse me, we did talk about the fact that, that.
Put the number back up.
That we are going, correct. And that's what I'm asking her to do. Yes, please. Can you say it right into the microphone so everyone can hear?
Say it into the microphone, this.
I don't know what off the top of my head.
I do, I can, well, wait, wait a second. Wait a second. Drinking water call-out number. All right. Message view contact.
978 something.
501.
501, go ahead.
7600.
Can you say that right into the microphone, Mr. Tracy, so people can hear it?
And that's the after-hours emergency number?
Yes.
That's the drinking water on-call number, yes.
And as we said earlier, we are planning to hire someone, is that correct, Mr. Fantasy, to actually be a town employee to handle these issues?
Yeah, it will just be for that. It'll be part of his duties.
But that, that'll be someone that these people can call, so they don't have to.
It'll be a town-side person.
They will be, thank you.
Tara Stone, 10 Lakenham Drive, speaking one last time. I will say, I do have all the after-hours and I can say that a lot of times, we're the ones who notify small water systems when there's a water outage. They aren't even aware of it. The after-hours number is always manned. I've woken people up at 3 o'clock in the morning, so the numbers do work, so I thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I have a couple of outstanding questions. I'm still unclear as to what we can and can't do with our water as it is right now. I have my children texting me, "Can I take a shower?" I don't have the answer. Can, can they shower? Can they wash their hands? Can we, I mean, we know we can't drink it, so we can't cook with it.
Kevin, while she's handing that out, can you speak to that?
In my garden.
About, about her question about showering and washing hands?
Yes, can we water our gardens?
The, the water has, the, the water that's being distributed through the system from North Carver right now has, has elevated iron and manganese. Carver right now has, has elevated iron and manganese. Naturally occurring minerals, they're not dangerous, they're just, it's not pretty.
So they can shower, they can wash their hands?
Yes. Yes.
Health-related concerns about manganese contact your healthcare provider.
Ma'am.
So that's not dangerous? So we're not dangerous?
Ma'am.
I'm reading off the desk.
Is that, do you have other questions?
Naturally occurring.
I just want to make sure your questions get answered.
It seems a little contradictory. If here, it says to contact the healthcare provider. So I'm a little unclear as to if it's safe to actually shower. For my children to wash their faces with this water? Can we water our gardens, where we're growing vegetables and fruits? Is that safe? Another question that I have is, while we're here at the meeting, are getting this notice, we have restaurants down the street that are serving people with this water.
I will stop by personally...
They're giving them this water to drink at the table.
I'll stop, I'll stop by personally and drop one off.
But does that mean the businesses are shut down? Is something posted on their door so that the residents know? And I'm not looking to drive away business from, you know, a struggling town, that's not, but I'm looking to inform the people. And should, should, should be eating at an establishment that has contaminated water?
I've talked to Shaw's, several, several different department heads at Shaw's, including the corporate office, so I've talked to them. And I will certainly speak to the restaurants in town, Steve, well, I'm sorry, you're not Steve. Steve was probably... So I, I will hand these out on my way around town this evening, make sure that they all get them.
I'm going to suggest that the residents here post this to the Carver Facebook pages for anyone that may follow.
And it's not the iron we worry about, that's fine, because it's only addressed to the manganese, it's in the water.
Is there anything else from the select board? Mr. Carter, Ms. Ewing?
Now, we're talking EPA and state limits. They set the levels. They set the levels, and it's the manganese that, that is, could have a health effect. And I got to tell you, when you, when you talk about health effects, contaminants...
We're talking to folks in the, in the audience. I think we have to go through, so we can, remember, we were on TV. Ma'am, why don't we wait here and then...
I just was going to reiterate the importance when we were discussing the all-town, because the whole town, well, if you shop at Shaw's, and that water is spraying on the vegetables that these families are bringing home, whether they're in our district or not. I really feel like this is an emergent issue beyond our district. Where they're talking restaurants, and now Shaw's, I didn't even think of that, when you go in Shaw's, and that water sprays over the vegetables every 15, 20 minutes?
And that's why we have the two separate 911s.
And I feel like it should be out like now, not just those people in the room. It's such an emergent situation.
Well, Middleborough said they could have us on by 9 o'clock this evening, so...
Okay, but I guess I'm confused. They said, they said 9 o'clock this evening, but then you talked about testing.
Testing.
Which might take a week.
That's right. I, I can't, I can't change that, yeah.
I just got a question. What is the typical gallonage that gets used daily by the, by the...
About 40,000, 40,000 gallons a day to North Carver.
I know we've got a 20,000 gallon holding tank. Okay. Is there any way, maybe it's a stupid question, that we can somehow get clean portable water put in that holding tank, and maybe backfeed it with a tanker, so we can flush out the system, so these guys might have water in a day or two?
Grab some of those drugs I sent out all in.
We can certainly do that. How much money you got, I mean, we can do that.
So through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Steve? What you were just talking about, John, so I think the plan is, they're going to, I just had a brief conversation with small water systems, and I told them if they needed someone to help flushing tonight, I will. Their plan is to shut down the plant tonight, and push water through flushing that way. So we take Middleborough's water, push it towards the plant. Middleborough's water is tested, so that is, we're going to say clean water, because they test like we do. They, their water is good. So it'd be the same as bringing in trucked water, as you said. So the Middleborough's water, we know, is clean source, and it would give us better pressure, they, they have higher pressure. So that's going to help. It's going to be a little disruptive, as Mr. Bumper stated, where they chlorinate, that's going to agitate a little bit of our iron in our pipes. But we're going to push it through flushing, and hopefully get all that out. Now, we're flushing the mains. What that means is, every road, there's a line going down, all your lines to your houses or branches. There will be a little flushing that'll be needed by the residents to eliminate that. But I think Middleborough is our best source for flushing.
License active?
Tonight. Yes.
Would that mean that the water that they're pushing is then tested through?
You know what, I, what you're, I know what you're asking. I will call Jim McGlaughlin at the state tomorrow, and tell him all of this development. And we're, of course, by, by federal law and everything, we're obligated, you have to send this out with, with a lot of this language that's in here, okay? But I will, I will say to him, the residents are asking, because we're using Middleborough water tomorrow, right, this evening tomorrow, and flushing, after flushing and all of that, can we go ahead and tell the people the water's fine to drink, because it is Middleborough water, which is fine to drink? So, but I honestly, I, we answer to the state, they're like our police, you know, so I have to ask them before I can say, you're, you know, I, what he said to me was, take a sample, and then another one or two days, take another sample. You've got to give us clean samples before we can lift this notice and say, you don't need it anymore. So he, I have to get his okay to say that. But sitting here, I, Middleborough water is safe to drink, we're going to flush out the lines with Middleborough water. What, what you just said about, there'll still be some of the iron and manganese in the service line from the main to your house. Though, this is what I tell people, when, when all of this is fine, we're on Middleborough water, and you're still getting cloudy water out of your faucet, you have to run the water. So now you have to flush all of this stuff out of your house, right? And I, I recommend people use the tub to, for flushing in your house, because you get so much more volume out of that than the little kitchen sink. So in, in your kitchen and bathroom, you take that little aerator off, and you'll get more flow through, and you want to run those until all of that water is clear. So it's going to take a little while. You want to throw out the ice cubes, all of that stuff. The ice cubes, and your hot water tank, you got to drain the bottom of that out and everything, because there'll be sediment in there. So, yeah, so it is a...
It sounds like we have a lot of different things possibly going on with the Middleborough and the Carver water. So we, we need one point of contact for everybody to reach out to. Can we all agree, Mr. Fennessy, that you'll be that point of contact here at Town Hall? People have a question on where we're at in the process, they can reach out to the town administrator's office?
Yep. Just call through the selectman's office, and they'll get me.
508-3...
Sure thing.
All right. Is there anything else from the North Harbor Water Commission?
I just wanted people to be reassured, not reassured, that's a bad choice of word. The sooner we can open up the valve and get water flowing from Middleborough and start flushing, it's, it, it might only be 12 hours, but we're 12 hours ahead of the game about getting everyone signed off at the state level and everything. So if we can start it at 9 o'clock, let's start it at 9 o'clock, why wait until we talk to them tomorrow?
And again, Mr., if, folks, if you need anything at all from the select board, just let us, let us know.
Just one last follow-up. When we have that go, can we, how fast can we put this 911 reverse call line, let everybody know that we've got, the testing is good, use your water, flush it out, flush your water, so they all know in real time, it's time to go?
I can, I can send, send another notice that you can put on the town website, and you can refer to it on the 911. And I leave it up, if you want to tell us, I mean, we'll do door hangers, we will do something like that, put something in writing, and put it in a, in a bag, and on a door hanger, and put it on everybody's front door.
And every different way we can notify people.
Yeah, whatever you want, whatever you want, so.
Any and all of it.
All right? Whatever it takes.
Yep. All right. Anything else from the select board?
Thank you.
All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh... Mr. Badges.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, Dan Badges, 165 Plymouth Street. I yielded the mic before, because I had asked about next steps. There were some concerns. One of them was addressed, but there are three major, three major things that are involved with next steps. One is evaluating the system and seeing how it needs to be upgraded, because whatever fix gets put in place, with the help of Middleborough, thank you, in advance, if that helps, if that actually ends up happening, that's going to be, what, a year? And we'll need, we'll need to start addressing this issue yesterday, in terms of how the system, how the system is, is not only going to be fixable, but not to, not to Band-Aid the thing, but actually, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of capital that's going to need to go into upgrading the system that is already in existence. Not only that, but the actual, the pipes, and everything that has to do with, with efficiency of flow. How, the second thing is how to fund this. Not only the system, but the operators. However, we're going to, and then the third thing, you know, the point of contact, I hear that, you know, you're looking at, at possibly having that person. But the main thing is, I'm hearing from everybody, you know, all, all the finger pointing aside, it kind of comes down to money, and how this thing gets funded, but you can't know how much money you're going to need until we get an actual idea of the system that, what's wrong with the system now, and the system we're going to need in 10 years, not the system that we're going to need in a year, because that system is already obsolete. The system in place is obsolete.
I can say, to one thing, when you talk about, you're at the limit of the withdrawal, the next thing is, you need another well. So, and that's either on some property the town owns already, or, I hate to say this out loud, but to, to purchase another property. I got to tell you, the permitting for, for getting a new town well online, a new large well, you're looking at like 10 years. So what, what we can do through the district, if you want, and we can talk to Middleborough, who their engineers, or you probably wanted to go to bid, but, and have an engineer, as part of evaluation of the system, talk about, you know, future growth of the town, that's what we're talking about, not just, like you're saying, a Band-Aid for today. But what, what is the town going to need in 10 years? Do you see explosive growth in some towns that's crazy? Then, then you want to move to, find, where in water is, is there good groundwater, where in town is there a good groundwater source, and what parcels might be available for the town? I, I don't know other parcels you might already own, maybe, I hate to say conservation land, but you're putting a well in it. I know, you're putting a well in it, you're not taking any trees out.
Where it is now is conservation.
Is conservation.
The whole parcel.
So, but that's, that's really the, the fact of the matter is, is if you're, you're approaching capacity with recent development and new buildings going, large buildings going in, the next thing is, in order to keep building, then you need another well, you know, another good-producing well.
And that, that again, is a, a system question.
That's a system question, so, so you...
So my, my suggestion, sorry to interrupt, my suggestion is, with those three ticket items, that is, that in concert with maybe a couple citizen liaisons, so that there is not only just the appearance of transparency, but there in fact is some type of, of voice in concert with that, to have those be your next, those next three agenda items for your next meeting.
Could you say those agenda items again?
Yeah. Having, inviting an expert or experts to come in to evaluate the system, perhaps, you know, from A to Z, as that, as to what, what's working, what's not working, how, in the location that's already in existence, how we can, how we can get that system up to grade, but also one that is going to be able to answer, answer the, the call for, for volume and pressure, and, and efficiency in 10 years from now, at least. And then, you know, looking past that, I mean, any new technology's going to be obsolete if you're going anything less than that. How to fund that? I've, I've talked with different, different people in this body, at different times, about grant writing, maybe, maybe the point-of-contact person's of being, playing, having that role as well, or that's something that, that maybe, you know, amongst us, we can figure that part out, because the enterprise fund that, that handles operating costs is not, is not something that is going to cover what's ahead of us. And that, those funds can't also be drawn from customer rates. It's already, the, the system's at capacity, and the people that are using that system, their checkbooks are at, at capacity as well, I think is fair to say. You know, and then, and then lastly, having a real evaluation of who this point-of-contact person would be, not just a nice person, but somebody who has actually either a background in actually system maintenance or operations, or at least somebody who's, as I like to say, an expert at what they're not an expert at, so that they know, hey, I've, I'm, I'm out of my lane, and I'm going to, I know that these three resources the town has for me to make those calls, and I can at least, at the very least, be a choke point of communication for the town. That in and of itself would be a win, just so that we're, again, a little bit more proactive in, in addressing these things, because as I said, not putting anybody down, I'm putting myself down when I say that, you know, that all collectively, we're, we don't have the answers. But these three line items have to be, have to be addressed, and that should be your next agenda, is my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Uh, Mr., would you like to adjourn your board?
Can I ask one question? Can I ask the group just one question? What we've been, in the last couple of weeks, telling residents, the, the new adage here is, if you see something, say something. And we're telling them, if you see a hydrant flowing that doesn't have one of our trucks that has S W S S all over the sides of them, right? If it's not one of our trucks nearby a flowing hydrant, or a fire department truck, then that person is, they're stealing water. Because if you're giving some contractor permission, then there'd be a meter on that, because you want to charge them for the water that is using, and, and on, and on, and on, or if someone's stealing it. So I've been saying to whoever's been calling me, that, that I've been talking to, is if you see something, say something. And then someone, it was our own receptionist said, okay, when they call, and they say, this is my name, my address, the hydrant out front, someone's, you know, taking water, a hydro seed truck is hooked up to a hydrant, you know? And then they hang up, and then I say, and she says, oh, who do we call after that? And so I said to Kevin, do we want to, who do we want to send out there? I don't think you want a resident going, excuse me, you're breaking the law, right? I'm thinking, okay, I'm not, I'm not trying to start trouble or anything, but is it okay? Should we call the police? Because it's actually a theft, right?
Certainly call the police.
So, so, so I should call the police, or we, or call the police chief?
That's cool.
And say, you might, in time, you might get a call from us, that one of the residents has reported someone's, you know, operating a hydrant, and I will tell them the same thing, if you don't see a fire department truck there, or one of our Swiss trucks there, then someone's stealing water. You know?
Mr. Fennessy, we probably...
They can get the license plate, or the name of the company that's on the side.
And then, and then the water district fines them for stealing the water, and it goes from there, but I just wanted to put that out there, so this board, and TV knows who I'm talking about.
Well, yeah. As if he doesn't do enough.
All right.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Mike, motion to adjourn? Okay. I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I agree now.
Is there a motion from the select board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you all coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.